Through the chair, you're live on HCAM TV.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening and welcome to the August 9th, 2021 meeting of the Hopkinton Planning Board. I'm going to go through the remote meeting script before I do a roll call of the attendees. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with the recently signed an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of the governor's March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live, adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Adequate alternative means may include, without limitation, providing access through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of the public body in real time. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting laws requirement that a forum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the town's web meeting calendar and the Planning Board agenda identifying how the public may join. Additionally, the meeting may also be broadcast by HKM through one or many of its channels or platforms. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting, before we begin our agenda, we'll cover some ground rules for Planning Board for anyone who has not been present at these meetings before. I'll introduce each item on the agenda. We, all discussion will take place through the chair. There'll be no talking back and forth between other members or, or public, members of the public. Not every agenda item will feature public comment, but we'll make it clear when public comment is called for. And, and all of our votes need to be taken by roll call vote. All right. So this is Mary Larson Marlowe, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and I'll be Acting Chair for this, for this meeting, but I'm going to go through a roll call of members right now. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Rob.
Rob Benson, present.
Dave. Dave, you're muted. Okay, yes, he gave us a thumbs up. We'll count that. Fran.
Randy Young, present.
Jane.
Jane Moran, present.
Shahidul.
Shadil Manan, present.
Dave Paul, present.
Thank you, Dave. Deb.
Deborah Feinberg, present.
Sundar. Sundar? Are you there? Okay. He's not on mute, but it seems that his audio is not working. All right. So I, and, and our, our staff, John.
John Gossett, present.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Stephanie Pemberton, present.
Thank you. And I believe Phil from Beta is also present.
Phil Paradas from Beta is present, yes.
Thank you. All right. So we can begin. Let me get rid of the remote meeting script. Tonight's agenda is not going to follow the exact order on which it, that it, that it is on paper right now. I would like to quickly go through the two, well, one A and R and one waiving fee for the Leonard Street A and R and get those out of the way so that anyone who was here for those can, can leave us if they wish to. And then the next item on the agenda will be the Connolly Farm hearing, which will be approximately one hour in length, no more than one hour in length. And that is chaired by Frandy Young. So, and then later in the agenda, we will cover the appointments for zoning advisory committee and for a design review board, as well as the other administrative items. All right? Okay. So, starting with the 164 Fruit Street. Wagner Braga. I apologize if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. Approval not required plan. And who is here representing that?
I am.
Joe McQuaid.
Hi, Joe.
Evening.
So, John, can you just give us a brief overview?
Sure. So, I just brought the plan up on the screen. It appears to be one lot. If you can see my cursor, like that, getting split right there. This is an existing house and barn, and this is the new lot. It appears that the new lot and the, the existing lot, the one that's going to remain, both meet frontage and SEP and lot size requirements, so. Looks like it should be endorsed if the board so chooses. And my only one other note was, this has nothing to do with the A and R, but I just want the applicant to be aware. This is a scenic road. There are stone walls on the scenic road. Any of those stone walls are altered, they would need a scenic road permit for that work.
So, do any Planning Board members have any comments or questions?
One question, I think, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Fran.
So it looks like there's adequate frontage on both, with both lots. Is that correct, John?
And the frontage is on Fruit Street?
Yeah, that is correct, so. So all of this, there's a bunch of different angles, but it all adds up to the 33397.
Yeah.
Side all adds up to the 26769. And this is the A District, so it would need 200 feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, if I may, a general question.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. How much of tree cutting is involved to proceed with this?
I would say that no tree cutting is involved in splitting the lots in half on paper. But potentially, when they build, if, if they build on the other lot, there would be clearing involved to build that residence, if that is the case. But right now, the vote is, it has to do with only splitting the lot in half, as indicated.
Thank you for the kind of use.
Sure. All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this? I don't see anybody with their hand raised, too. And Joe, is there anything that we haven't discussed already that you wanted mentioned?
I think John covered it all. We have area and frontage in excess of the minimums, and the division line creates no setback issues to the existing barn.
Good. Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to endorse this A and R. Is that the right verbiage?
Yes.
Okay. Who did I hear that motion from? I'm sorry. Fran, Fran, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, and a roll call vote. Dave.
Dave Paul, yes.
Fran.
Randy Young, yes.
Jane.
Jane Moran, yes.
Deb.
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Shahidul.
Shadil Manan, yes.
Sundar.
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Rob.
Rob Benson, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. So, we need five signatures?
Correct.
So five people show up tomorrow.
We are open until seven. I may not be there until seven, but I'll probably be there until 5:30. Steph will be there until seven. So come by.
Thank you.
Please.
I think you just miss us, John. That's why you want us to stop by and visit.
And there will be candy, just like last time.
Oh. I don't know, that didn't really bring that many people in last time.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Okay.
Ice cream.
Ice cream. That's harder to do when they don't know when they're gonna, we're gonna get there. All right. Our next item is to vote to formally waive the fee for the Leonard Street A and R that we voted on at the last meeting and signed subsequently. This, the Leonard Street A and R, as you recall, was withdrawn at a previous meeting and resubmitted, and it was based on our, our requests that some wording be double-checked with the engineer and so on. So, so at the time, we, we did, you know, tentatively agree that the fee would be waived for that reason. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that? No? Okay. And, and I don't, I don't think it's necessary for any other, you know, there wouldn't be any public comment on this. So, so we'll just do, I'll entertain a motion to waive the fee for the Leonard Street A and R that was endorsed at the July 30th meeting. Is that right? Which meeting was it? I'm sorry. Say again. Oh, July 26th meeting. Okay. So I'll entertain that motion.
Sundar Subraman, so moved.
Thank you.
I'll, Dave Paul, second.
Thanks. Okay, roll call vote. Dave.
Dave Paul, yes.
Fran.
Randy Young, yes.
Jane.
Jane Moran, yes.
Deb.
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Shahidul.
Shadil Manan, yes.
And Sundar.
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Rob.
Rob Benson, no.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. All right. Okay, and there's nothing that we need to do for signing that or anything like that, right, John?
Nope, you're all set.
Okay. Okay. Terrific. So, we are going to move on to the continued public hearing for the OSLPD subdivision for Connolly Farms. This is being chaired by Fran, so I'm going to hand that over to him, and I will be recusing myself for this hearing. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, everybody, and good evening, members from the public. This is a continuation, as the Madam Chairwoman had mentioned, from the July 12th meeting. At that time, there were a number of kind of outstanding questions emanating from the Beta letter. So I know that there's been some discussions with both the applicant and Phil from Beta on some of those outstanding items. I'd like to get into that. And for those following along at home, I'm following the outline, generally speaking. I'm not going to talk about the waivers. We've talked about those previously. But I am going to kind of engage in the discussion on the Beta letter. And I do appreciate the applicant providing some additional, a number of additional documents as to the updates to the basins and swells, the 100-year storm on the swells as well. I probably won't get into much detail with that unless Beta has questions or comments to it. So that being said, there is a document that I'm going to review that was submitted by Beta on July 30th, providing some updates. John, the, our planner, had so kindly edited those so as to not necessarily include the ones that have been closed in the packet of information, but really kind of focused on the ones that are still, still have either open or have some question on it. So that's kind of where I'm going to start the discussion this evening. But before I do, there was one question that I have to the applicant that emanated from the meeting, actually, the meeting minutes on the 12th. And I didn't see any updates to it, so I'll ask him. I don't know if it's Mr. Nation or Joe, if it's you. I think it's more aligned to Mr. Nation, but there was talk about reaching out to Chief Slaman about some of his questions and concerns, and I just didn't, I know at the last meeting, the meeting minutes date, Mr. Nation, that you were going to potentially touch base with the chief, and I was just curious if any conversations have been held. I'm not sure if Mr. Nation is on. John, do you have any visibility there?
I don't see Mr. Nation. I see Chris Nation, but not Ron.
Chris, if you're listening in, I'm not sure if you're aware of any conversations with the chief, but maybe I'll just hold that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
There may be some complications because there is a new chief. Slaman resigned, and I believe it's William. I can't think of his last name. He's a new chief.
Miller, but through the chair, Chief Slaman is on, and I believe Chief Slaman is still chief until August 27th.
Correct.
And he is on, so I'm sure he could probably, oh, and he just jumped off. Nope, he's, there it is.
Oh, you're back. Welcome.
Yeah, I would, it's a pleasant surprise, sir. Pleasant surprise.
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks for jumping on. So, man.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well-earned. I don't know if you heard my question to Mr. Nation, but at the last meeting on 12th, we talked a little bit about him reaching out to yourself, just to touch base on some of the concerns that, that you had expressed. And I was just curious, again, initially directed probably to Mr. Nation as to, you know, the extent of the conversation with yourself, but since you're one of the two participants in those conversations, and Mr. Nation's not here right now, love to get your perspective.
I did not hear from him.
Okay. All right. So, thank you very much. That might be one thing I do, I would like to follow up on. And Chief, are your concerns still, I, maybe if you can just kind of reiterate or, or kind of highlight a couple of those concerns, so we can have them on the record.
Yeah, I did send a letter in with the concerns. I'm hoping you have that. Just off the cuff, I can tell you that, I guess I was urging you not to give a special waiver, if I'm using the right terms, to the frontage because the frontage was actually creating a situation for us that the, it was creating longer driveways and actually starting to push the houses closer together, and those aren't things that I'm looking for. And it's on top of, you know, the maximum distance on a dead-end road and being a cul-de-sac, and I just didn't think it's a good recipe to then have a waiver on top of it. I did offer some suggestions, maybe if you wanted to mitigate that type of a condition that we've been talking to a lot of the builders about residential home sprinklers, and it really helps with the situation where the driveway challenge for us is getting the equipment in and a fire hose supply in, and the sprinklers actually handle the safety issue and generally help contain the fire, so we're dealing with a much smaller thing and don't need all of that. So it kind of helps mitigate across the board, but if none of that can be applied, then I would just suggest, you know, paring back the design so that you had the right frontages. You know, just the, even the building code as it stands, we still have some issues with exposure problems, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't start giving waivers. I think that's my short story. I can answer any questions.
I, I think that helps kind of set the table a little bit for the, for the board members. Thank you, John. And I do think it's important that that conversation does occur with Mr. Nation to get Mr. Nation's perspective on it. I do know that, as I look for, one of the waivers. I'm not sure, John, that's identified as one of the waivers. I'm not looking, I'm not seeing it as part of 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5. So. We're gonna have to kind of, we've got to address that.
Look through the chair. I, I want to say, they had a waiver for that, and then they withdrew the waiver for the full frontage. I could be mistaken.
Yeah, and so I don't see it on the, the outline. It's not crossed out.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Mark Woodon, please.
We had that waiver originally regarding the lot configuration. We worked the boundary lines to eliminate the need for that waiver.
Got it. That's why I'm not on with the waiver request. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions by board members for the chief while we have him? All right. Seeing none, I will move on. Thank you, Chief. All right. Getting in now to 2.6.3. These are the outstanding Beta comments where there's remaining outstanding issues. So I do commend the applicant working with Phil and commend Phil working with the applicant to address many of the questions or outstanding, the issues that were outstanding. A number of them have been remediated, but there are still some that are outstanding that we have not been remedied. So, Phil, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll start with you and just looking at 2.6.3.1, and we'll start with the G's and just kind of work through, and maybe, you know, now that we have Mr. Mark Woodon's on and full board, we can kind of start to work through some of these ones that are still open. So, Phil, if you're there.
I am.
Awesome. Let's go, let's start with G1 and.
So, so, yeah, so, you know, it's, you know, G1, the, the plans aren't, aren't too kind of a standard I'm used to. So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think I've seen a change, much of a change in the plans since we've added this, this. So, and I also don't want to hold up the project if this, if this is something that the, the board is not, is not particularly concerned about, so.
Well, I, I would think if it's, if it's a concern of yours, it should be a concern of the board.
Right, so.
Right? And, and this has been on here now for a, a, a couple of sessions, and maybe that, I'll, I'll kind of reach back out to Mr. Mark Woodon just to kind of say what can be done here. I just don't understand the challenges.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I thought we had made great strides with this last set. We turned the background information to grayscale, turned, changed the line weights to differentiate different thicknesses as you move through, took off extra verbiage that may have clouded the plan previously and labeled some of the lines that appear less frequently, for instance, the easement lines, those sorts of things to, to try and clean it up. I thought, I thought we were there, quite frankly.
So, so given that, are, you know, Phil, are there, are there additional areas of question or?
So, I mean, so if you look at the plan he's got up now, can you clearly identify what are the property lines on that plan?
So I have to make it much bigger. Unless it's in. I can get, and I can do, I can get a general idea, I think, of some of the property lines. Joe, is there a, a particular shade or dotting that could be done for the line to delineate what the property lines actually are?
I guess, short of coloring the lines differently, I mean, we have done so with the wetlands resource areas and the buffer zones associated with those, to try and differentiate those. I imagine that tree line could be, I mean, the boundary line could be a different color from, say, the grading line.
Can, can I just ask if you're using HydroCAD?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, AutoCAD?
AutoCAD. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can do line types like, you know, Phantom, or, I mean, that's typically what.
Well, we did, through the chair, a limit of work is different from our grading line. Their label limit, label ECB erosion control, we, we've tried to, to get there so that we were, I guess, to make it a little bit easier for everybody to appreciate.
I think I'm.
Through the chair.
I'm open to suggestions. Yes.
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah. Just, just to, just to talk here, I mean, yeah, absolutely right. This has actually come, come twice or thrice now in, in succession, in successive meetings. Should this be taken almost like offline, one-on-one between Mr. Paradis and, and Mr. Mark Woodon? And, you know, not that it should not be brought to this forum, but, you know, that level of clarity or lack thereof should be addressed right there. And at that point, if Mr. Paradis has questions, you know, the exact kind of zooms that you're doing here right now, I was just curious if, you know, Mr. Paradis and Mr. Mark Woodon could do that, just to say, okay, yeah, I get it. Or something like more, more one-on-one sessions rather than bring this here as an objection. Just, just, just a thought.
You know, I, I'm not opposed to that, although I think some of those conversations have taken place. This item has been open now for a few sessions. So I, I don't know if they're looking for the Planning Board to adjudicate this and, and make some clear suggestions or recommendations.
I.
I, I think it's, quite frankly, I think it's between the professional staff on both sides to, I think, Sundar, to your point, come to a resolution that, you know, that Beta then is comfortable with, you know, the, the plans. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm open to suggestions because I, I do think, you know, and maybe it's one other thing in AutoCAD that can be done to, to Phil's comment or suggestion.
Through the, through the chair.
Maybe, yes, Deb.
I, I think what I saw for the contiguous property lines that's lacking is the connection of the back property line with the side property lines, and that might be what Mr. Paradis is talking about. Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Paradis?
No, typically, a property line is, is got a different line type, like it's not continuous. It's a, either a phantom or, yeah, yeah, and it's also a most, and it, and it's subdivision-type setting. It's, it's important to see because you want to see how, you know, you know, for instance, this one right through the middle here, it, you know, it, it's got to differentiate, differentiate itself between the driveway lines and the contour lines and the, you know, I mean, again, it's not wrong. It's just not as clear as it could be. So I don't think it's something we need to hold up the project for. But again, I don't, you know, I think anytime you can make it easier for someone to see it, that, that it makes it come, come alive, so.
I agree, and I like Sundar's contribution that this is something probably you two could work on offline.
I, I, I'm not opposed to that. So I will then, you know, leave it to the two professional staff groups to work out resolution. Maybe it's using a different font, color, type to delineate the property line.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Paul, the floor is yours.
I just have one comment. I, I know they can work it out whether they want to change this, the, the format that's commonly used by most applications, but what I'd like to suggest is, at the very least, going forward with future applications, that the Joe Markadon group follows the standards.
I, I think that's a fair comment. You know, it makes it easier for all of us. You know, it makes it easier for all of us when it aligns to the, the, what's, what Phil has talked about here.
Thank you.
I, I think your point is well made, Mr. Paul.
One, one, to the chair, one last point from my end. Both Mr. Mark Woodon and Mr. Paradise have been in front of this board for a lot of things. This is the first time or first situation that I've heard the lack of clarity in a map. So I'm just curious, is this very specific to this property or a change process on, on either end or change expectations? I'm just curious about that.
So we've, we've had a comment several times. It's not, it's not new to just this project. So.
Okay. Thanks.
I, yeah, I, I want to spend all of the time here.
Again, it's not wrong. It's just, it would be helpful to have it more clear. So.
Understood. So the next one, general G6. Phil?
So I think this has been unaddressed since we, the initial comment. I think there was maybe other comments that reflected a, that the design team mentioned that they changed the grading so that this could happen, but it was not very clear on the plans where those areas were. So.
Yeah. Joe, do you want to respond to that? Because I do know.
Chairman, if I may, we heard that, that resonated with us at the last meeting. And areas that we could make effective change, we did. For instance, over on lots one, two, and three, we added a limit of work to save trees between, along the boundary lines between those lots. Some of the areas are contained within the existing field, so there weren't trees to be saved in those locations. So changes and additions were made to the plan to kind of curtail that grading at boundary lines where possible.
I assume.
Do you have control of that screen, John? To the west, to the left of that, on that plan that you have there. The limit of work, say, between lot two and three. Limit of work between three and four. LOW, limit of work. We tried to highlight areas around the lot lines that would provide some screening between the homes and salvage some of those trees in the areas slated for development.
So, and this is new, Mr. Mark Woodon from the.
But this is on the latest revision, correct? The 728 revision?
And it's just maybe for my own edification, just with the limit of work. Does that, is that a defined area or is it just visually acknowledged or understood that you're trying to minimize, you know, the, the impact on existing trees where possible?
There was an attempt to, the site is, is very flat. There's not a lot of gray change across that site. To, normally we'd say, okay, curl a contour elevation in to connect to an existing one. Those that often show up on a site this flat, certainly it's difficult to grab when the tree line, the roadway runs right through the field. So we thought limit of work might allow the opportunity to save some along the common boundary line, create some screening where it wouldn't be immediately evident that a contour renewal, the grading stopped and an elevation showed itself that, that proved that that was the limit. So this seemed like the way to go is to highlight an area generally that did not need to be cut, did not need to be graded over. And therefore accomplish some of the goals that Beta outlined to, to cut down on the tree clearing.
So Phil, with that kind of background explanation, is that?
So, so I think, I think you've got to take this plan and hand it to a contractor and say, you know, do this. I don't think it says maintain or keep plants, trees within this limit or whatever. I don't, even if, if it's in the field. I mean, that, it wasn't just obvious to me. So, again, I don't know. You know, I think it's very important that you identify, you know, areas that you want to maintain the trees and, and, and point them out that way as opposed to kind of inferring of a limit of work, but.
Yeah, on this one, I would agree with Mr. Paradise. I've seen too many developments in this industry. You know, speaking to Mr. Mark Woodon's work and Mr. Nation's work, but I've seen other developments where an opportunity to save trees was, was missed and space was just cleared out to, in order to make it easier for the developer to put in the homes. And that's why I asked the question around LOW. That could mean different things to different people. And if it's a defined area, I think it makes it much clearer for, you know, a contractor or even a worker to kind of look at the plan, understand I'm supposed to keep these trees where if I just see SOW, I, you know, it's up to, it's in the eye of the beholder to some degree. And maybe that's just me, but I, and I'll look to professional folks on that one. But the more specificity on the SOWs, I, I, I think would help.
I guess the benefit, I guess the benefit this project enjoys is that Mr. Nation will be doing the work. You know, on this from, from the get-go. So is well aware of the, the goals outlined by the board by, by Beta.
Is it something there that we define what the SOW areas are, Mr. Paradise? Or is that something Beta would do or the applicant would?
So, I mean, another way to do it is to, to have them identified on the landscape plan or, you know, that, that the trees are going to be there or whatever. I, you know, I, I, unless we are in this discussion, I don't know that anybody would understand what that meant. So.
Sorry, through the chair. I muted you when I meant to mute, unmute myself. I apologize. What I was, through the chair, what I was going to suggest is there could be a condition added if the board sees fit to say that the LOWs could be flagged prior to site clearing and remain flagged and no work is to be undertaken in there so that the trees could be preserved.
That works.
Works for me. We can add, we can add that as a condition. Very good. G8, Phil, consider adding wood rail fence.
So they haven't formally addressed this, but I think they did add the shrubs along the proposed top of the drainage basins. So. I don't, I don't, I don't have opinion one way or the other. It's, when I say consider, it's something that, you know, it's a good idea. And they did add the shrubs. I'm not, I'm not convinced that it needs a wood rail fence. But, so I think we're okay with this one.
Mr. Mark Woodon, any comments or thoughts?
Related to the comment we kicked off on, it was concerned that if we added additional information to the plans that this office prepared, that would only exacerbate the issue with clarity. So the plantings are on the landscape plan prepared by Larry Green.
Okay.
So the last sheet, the package, has a lot of those planting locations called out.
Very good. So were any shrubs added or was just the clarity that Larry put together in the, in the last page of the plan?
It was the information Larry provided last time, updated with some of the species that you discussed as a board while I was away about a month ago.
Board members feel pretty good about that one?
Yeah, I, I saw them in the minutes through the chair. I think there were things like pollinators, low growing pollinators and things like that. But they're in the minutes.
I'm going to say this one is resolved. All right, on to C1. Phil, it looks like the request there is for a design stamp, a signature?
Yeah, I mean, this is standard with any submission to a public, public, for public review is that the registered engineers stamps and signs it. I don't think I've ever waited till the end of the project for the engineer to stamp it. So. I don't think I've ever heard of it, but.
Where Mark Woodon?
Mr. Chairman, we have been involving registered personnel throughout the development of these plans and each plan cover sheet has been stamped, make you folks aware. We touched on this last time. We can stamp them. It does not matter to us. It seemed like we could pick it up at any time. So if you like all the sheets stamped in addition to the cover sheet, we can certainly do that.
That would be great. I, I think I would, I appreciate the offer, Mr. Mark Woodon. I think we'll take you up on it. I think it seems, it sounds like consistent with other, with the process that Beta has worked with other engineering and development firms. So if you could do that, that would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Through the chair. Going back.
Yes, John.
Going back to comment G6, I drafted a condition if I could read it and make sure it's acceptable to the board and the applicant.
Yes, please.
All right. So the limit of work is to be flagged prior to site clearing to show boundaries on the ground. Trees and vegetation within these areas is to remain in its natural state throughout construction.
Feels acceptable at first blush. I'll look to my fellow planning board members for thoughts and comments.
Sounds appropriate.
All right, here are no others. I would agree with, with Jane. John, you might have a second career moonlight as a copywriter for for these things. So thank you very much for putting that condition in writing. We'll kind of add that to the end. Okay, we've completed C1. C5, that would be deferred to the select board on the street name. Stormwater, SW3. Looks like elevations need to be included. Phil, anything that, anything there?
No, I think it just sort of helped the contractor. Let's be more specific. So.
Mr. Mark Woodon, is that possible to add the elevation?
Absolutely.
Standing. We're going to close that one out. All right. Pretty close. Are we five or?
Through the chair, just a point of clarification. Isn't the elevation usually part of the design or it's not always mandatory?
The elevation changes to, to, to show them?
Right, yeah.
I think typically, and Phil, keep me honest here, I think typically they will show the elevation changes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure. And just a suggestion that as we gather this feedback, it might be, if not already, I'm sure I'm learning as well to standardize some of these, so kind of reflect on all the plans usually we get submitted or visit.
Yes. Do not disagree. Moving on, SW10, it looks like potentially the recommendation is for a homeowners association to be created to maintain stormwater management trails. I think we touched on this the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Mark Woodon, I don't know if that's something that you can address or that would be something we would defer to Mr. Nation?
Think I'd, quite frankly, have to defer to, to Mr. Nation. I know he was generating some documents, but I'm not sure what's the status of those are at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I know that was talked about, but that seems pretty straightforward to me. So I think that one, we're going to kind of leave open to get some feedback from Mr. Nation. SW20. Extending interim contour to show the minimum of one foot of free board for the 100-year storm event. Phil?
Yeah, so the, the 19 and 20 were pretty, pretty similar. One was around the swell, one was around the corn. So when they addressed 19, they also addressed 20. I may have not stated that well enough to convey that. So.
Okay, it just said C19. So it looks like that, that, that one, that one is resolved.
Right, right.
All right. And then SW22, sediment four days.
So S, the sediment four bay is larger than it need to be, but if that's what the applicant wants to do, then they're free to do that. So it won't, won't negatively impact the project. So.
We'll just defer to Mr. Mark Woodon and Mr. Nation with a little bit larger than it needed to be, but doesn't seem to be that the negative at all.
No.
Planning board members, are we good with that? Any questions on 20 or 22?
Not for me.
All right.
Through the chair, just to throw my two cents in there. I think even though they're a little bit larger, I think it is probably a good move since I think we've identified poor soils in this area and we've had a history of stormwater issues this summer. I don't think it's going to get any better moving forward. So having a larger stormwater system and a sediment four bay is probably going to be a good thing.
I think you're 100% right, John. No doubt about it. All right, SW24. Phil?
So this is a standard practice to require the, the completed SWIP. Typically, the contractor is required to weigh in a little bit on that. So, so we just, it's, it's a typical condition to, that the applicant provide the final signed SWIP prior to construction. So.
And as John has noted, that is in the, it is listed as a condition. I'm going to close 24. And is 25 related to that, John? I'm sorry, Phil, is 25, SW25 relate to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, the applicant makes a good point here. It may not be a huge issue. It is outside the 100-foot buffer. We would just defer to the SWIP manager. Make sure that the construction of the trail does not also produce issues related to erosion. So. So I, I defer to the, to the SWIP manager for that.
So, all right, is that? Is that something we, we also list as a condition, John, or if Beta's going to defer that, do we want to be able to kind of have the SWIP manager manage that particular condition for that issue?
That would typically be the responsibility anyway. So I don't, I don't think it needs to be an added condition.
Just checking. Thank you. I'll close out 25, 26. Again. Beta okay with that?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got to be careful again. We, as, as John mentioned, we've had a couple of projects that have poor soils and there's clear cutting and this, so we want to make sure that's provisions for adequate sized sediment basins. So we require, request the, who had developed the SWIP to make sure that, that is included.
And again, is that kind of the normal, within the, the scope of normal work for the SWIP? Or is that something that could be included as a condition?
It is, it is included. No, it is a kind of standard practice. It's just here for emphasis mostly.
And so you don't think we, and I may not defer to this one to John a little bit, you probably, do you feel that we need a condition for this?
Was that to me?
Yeah.
No, I don't think we need a condition for this.
All right, I'm going to close out 26. 27. Beta recommends minimizing clearing to the extent practical, to avoid clear cutting.
So this, yeah, this is something that was just addressed with the previous condition for, what was it, G6?
Yep.
And clarified by Mr. And clarified by Mr. Mark Wooddon. So I did not, I did not see those as evident. So I think this, this is, this would be addressed by the, the condition related to G6.
John, looking at the condition that you wrote for G6, does it address here? Does it incorporate the elements of 27 to minimize the clear cutting? Feels a little different, but I'll.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I, I so the first sentence is that, that related to that. The, the second is that I think, I think we need to work with Mr. Nation relative to how many houses he think he can build in a season. And just, just clear cut those slots. Because we don't want what's happening out in, you know, Legacy Farms to be replicated here where we have excessive open lands with poor soils, you know, so. I mean, that'd be our recommendation is to work with with the, you know, with their, with their planning and, and maybe phase it a little bit here if we can, so.
Yeah, so I'm with you 100% because I've seen what's happened over there at Legacy and it is, doesn't look great. To be, to, to, to be quite frank, I think if something is to be, you know, recommended or followed, I'd actually wanted writing. Just so that everybody has a clear understanding of what your recommendation is here on the clear cutting and only cutting enough to build that particular dwelling and not necessarily the entire lot.
So what typically happens in this, in, in these type of projects is that the, you know, I know the owner wants to save money on the relative clearing of, of the project and it's, it's a fairly sizable cost. But the challenge is that once you clear it, and maybe they can clear it, but not grub it until they're ready to develop it within that, within that construction season. That March to November type, type season.
Yeah.
So then they, so that may be something that we can uh, well, they, that, that the, the owner can provide a kind of a schedule that they think is going to happen.
Yeah.
As a framework for going forward and you know, one or two lots more, it's not going to, you know, but I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of clear cutting, you know, the whole cake and bootle.
I get it.
Through the chair, I, I like the idea of framework. I think that's going to be very valuable. I just wanted to understand a little bit, once the clear cutting is done, is there any remediation or any action that can be taken to remediate? That we can also recommend or evaluate?
So, so it's, it's not necessarily a clear cutting, it's exposing the, the soils. Like if you've, you know, under, if you, if you cut all the trees, you still got the, the forest matting and, you know, that, that, that's covering the soils and will prevent erosion. But once you clear cut it and grub it, which means you, you've, you've, you've now bulldozed all the, all the stumps and all the topsoil off and stockpiled it and and now it's just exposed, you know, fine aggregate and, you know, the soils that are under, underlying the, the, the topsoil. That's where, that's where we're having problems because there's just so many fines. And it just, it just rains a little bit and it, you know, it's suspended in the water and, and you need flack, you know, there's, there's so many finds that you need flacklands to, 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 to get it to settle out again, so. So that's, that's the primary thing is maybe it's not clear cutting, but you can't grub until you're, you know, you're within the, you know, you're past the March and you're before the, 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 the winter where nothing's going to grow anyway.
No, thank you for the clarification. I was just wondering if there is any interim solution until the construction begins or it gets to that.
So, you know, on this one, John, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure it, it warrants a, a condition per se, or maybe it does.
Through the chair, I've actually drafted a condition while we're sitting here.
Beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
Got a roll.
Clearing on the site shall only consist of the number of lots estimated to be constructed during that construction season. The applicant shall submit a phase board prior to site clearing for review and approval.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Hold, hold on, David, just a second. John, were you finished?
Yeah, I was just asking Phil if, if he thought that would, that made sense or if that's too onerous.
So I think, I think I'm not opposed to the clearing of the, of the trees. It's, it's just the grubbing. It's the, the removal of the, of the, the matting, the, the forest matting that really, really sets the so I'm okay with them clear cutting the, you know, entire parcel. But as long as they don't grub, you know, they don't, you know, stockpile all the loam and then start for the whole thing. But, you know, obviously they, they'll need to grub to install the road and, 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 you know. So.
So changing clearing as the first word to grubbing.
Yeah.
Is that appropriate?
Yep.
Alright. That's what I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Okay, that, that was it, David?
Nope, perfect.
Alright.
Could you, you read it one more time, John, please?
Sure, and I, I think we should probably also get Mr. Mark Wooddon to weigh in on this too. Alright, so grubbing on the site shall only consist of the number of lots estimated to be constructed during that construction season. The applicant shall submit a phasing plan to the planning board prior to site clearing for review and approval.
Through the chair, may I make a suggestion, please?
Mr. Paul?
May. Instead of grubbing on the site, can we say grubbing of the building lots? To, to Mr. Phil's point about doing the rest of the site, the road and everything.
John? I don't know if that's the building lot versus the site, right? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think that might make sense because they're probably going to want to build the road first, so. Yeah, I think that makes sense. They would probably rub, rub the road first and then the lots, so.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dave.
Through the chair.
Uh, yes, John.
Yeah, could we hear from Mr. Mark Wooddon?
That's a good point. Yes, Mr. Mark Wooddon.
I guess we have no issues with the general spirit of the thing. We do not want to to get out of control, if you will. We don't have a lot of steep slopes, as I mentioned before. I think it's possible to, given all the, the thought we've given to erosion control and sedimentation control and the, and the site plans to, to control to get a good handle on where the water is headed and what potential areas might be problem spots. I guess the thing that keeps jumping up to us is that even though we've got a fair large site land wise, we've also clustered all our work in a very small portion of the site. Maybe perhaps eight, 10 acres of the, the 30 is involved in active construction. The buffer zones that limit our work, those sorts of things of a pretty very finite area. So to, I guess, limit where we head. I, I don't want to get caught up in making this so onerous, so difficult that what seems like a natural first step to, to Chris and Ron is something that forces us back on a, on a Monday evening to hash out the, the details with you folks. So I, I think we're of, of the same mind that the, the site needs to be managed, needs to be controlled. But I think the limited scope is something that we need to, to, to recognize.
Alright, thank you, Joe. Chris, Chris, you got, you got a comment in your hand? Can I see your hand raised?
Yeah, good evening. I think Joe explains it all real well. Mostly on wanted to point out that having those steep slopes, you know, really helps us not to have erosion in the first place. And as Joe mentions, we certainly don't want to be bound by something that can be confusing. There's just a few lots here and also remember we do have an order, we'll have order of conditions on most or many. And, and that, that, that binds us in and requires erosion control inspections and such. So I, I just don't view this site as any kind of possible problems and erosion. Once we go in, we cut the road and then we, we need a couple of lots to put materials, move materials around, but right when we start, we build the detention basin, you know, the water has a place to go initially. I would just hate to see a condition where, 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 where constrained and, and just it can be counterproductive is just what I'm hearing.
Fair point, and I'm going to kind of address it with, I, I, I see Craig has a question, a comment too. And then I, Chris, I'm going to address that back with, with John. You know, given your comment and I think Mr. Mark Wooddon's comment, you know, is the language in the proposed condition appropriate? So thank you for that. Craig? John can unmute you as well?
Uh, just piggyback on Chris's, uh, yeah, agree, that's, it's a pretty small site. You know, when we're road, we're to stockpile loom on and other materials, pipes and drainage and rocks and set up an operation and then also while we're, we'll look at how we've done Whisper Way. I think we've proven ourselves that we're capable of staying within our limited works everywhere we go. The other thing I'd like to add is when I say we're built, we haven't had a winter and that stopped us from that, that's had, that's been a since I think 2015, we've been pretty much working right through the winter. So I don't really recognize a, a stop season or a no work season anymore. That and just thinking about, there's only what, seven lots there? Right now, I'm, I'm up on Whisper Way. I'm doing three lots at a time. To build those three lots, I need three other lots. Cause I, for each one of those lots, I need a stockpile lot right next to it. So I'm working on six lots right now and you're talking about one more. To me, it's, to me, it's all one big phase. That's all.
Got it.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Hold on just a second, Dave. Thanks, Craig.
Through the chair, could I add one, one more?
Mr. Nation, please.
But it, the, the clear cutting term is, is, seems to be used here like like, like we're a legacy, I guess, is that if that's what they're doing, if they're clear cutting, we're certainly not clear cutting. We're trying to save every possible tree we can. So the, we, we won't be clear cutting the lots. And, and I mean, that's just a, just a point I'd like to make. Clear cutting sounds terrible. And that's not what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks.
Mr. Nation. I know there's a couple of comments from planning board members. I don't have it who in order, so I'll just open it up to other members and then I do want take it back to, to John to, to kind of let's just review this particular condition itself, but was that Jane kind of comment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we've ever, if the planning board has ever initiated some sort of action like this before. And again, if you look at the, the site and the project, it's limited. There aren't that many houses there. It's not like Legacy Farms that had 600 units going in there in a short amount of time, you know, or over a period of years. This is, I'm not sure, how many houses?
Nine.
Nine houses in a very short amount of time. I'm just wondering if this is something onerous that we're asking the developer to take on when they have, you know, shown or at least explained that they need to be able to do something so they can maintain. I mean, you're talking nine lots. If they're working on three houses at a time and they need three hot lots to work on. You know, and most likely they're going to be doing the whole nine within the year. Is this something over ominous that we're asking them to do?
Fair, fair point. I'm going to hold that thought for a second. Any other planning board members have comments?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Paul.
So I'm going to take the oppo, opposite approach and look at this a little bit more holistically. With the hope that what we define here could be taken on by the Zach to establish a a regulation on this. That being said, I'd like to define it a little bit more so that it works for everybody and that the developers don't feel constrained. And I have one more suggestion if you would be willing to entertain it.
I would be willing to entertain it because I think these, we're going to go back to John and the, if it pertains to the potential language in the condition, I'll entertain.
Yes, so instead of saying grubbing the building lot, I think we could be more specific and say grubbing for the excavation of foundations. And I think that would satisfy all the concerns about stockpile and loom, you know, being able to grade. I think we're basically saying, you know, don't, don't clear out a spot where you're going to pour a foundation if you're not going to do it for another year. Does that seem to make sense?
No, it doesn't to me because how would you limit that with the nine lots? What would you say? One, six and nine can't be scrubbed. I mean, I don't, I don't see how you could rule that. I don't think how you could just make a blanket statement like that.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Dave.
I, I'm just going along with, with our professional staff is saying that if they're one, six and nine wasn't going to be, the foundation wasn't going to be poured till next year, that they would refrain from clearing the foundation area for that.
Let me then, let me, let me kind of defer this to, to Phil and to John to comment.
So I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not, again, I, I think it's again an emphasis thing and making sure that the owner and applicant are, are cognizant of the fact that, that, you know, the, the soils do create a potential issue. We want the infiltration basins to work in the end, so they need to be protected as well. And, and, you know, ultimately, you know, because the soils are poor, there is a potential for issues to develop. If the applicant and, and I know Mr. Nation has, has proven he, he is, he's capable of, of managing that through the projects that we've, we've observed. So, and, and he's explained his operations, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that every contractor works the same way. So I think the idea of developing a plan and, and identifying it with the, 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 the planning board is one that's useful. It may, may be that, you know, he does get all the, you know, as he explains it, what's he, what's he's going to be installed and and the SWIP plan is a developed that this all may be moot anyway, so. But I think it's just a, a step to make sure that, you know, that it's thought through well.
And John, isn't that, isn't there something similar to that already a condition?
Yeah.
Right?
So. Yeah, a lot of things to unpack here. Going back to Jane's initial point. This is something that we do. They're just phasing plans for construction. So the applicant will submit a phasing plan, which will tell us when they anticipate doing each section of the development. So I don't think that's out of line. And, you know, I don't feel super strongly about this condition, but I'm just the way that I envisioned it and what I'm thinking of how it plays out is if the applicant is confident that they can get all the nine lots done in the construction season, be it March to December or March to August, or however they want to do it, they would indicate that in the phasing plan. And then it would kind of be covered there and then. And then it would kind of be covered there and then the planning board and the applicant just have an agreed upon plan that they can work from. So in that sense, I don't, I don't think it's too onerous, but I can see where they're coming from, where they don't want to have to do another step just to do what they think they can do in a construction season anyway. But I think to protect the town, it may be smart to just have that, like Phil said, in writing, a phasing plan, say they're going to do the road, phase one, they're going to do lots one through three, phase one A or two, however they want to number it. And then, you know, they'll get through the final phase by November. And then if we want to add something to this condition that says something like land that has been grubbed and, or land that's been grubbed and will not be, have, will not have a foundation constructed within 30 days or something that needs to be stabilized or some other way of, of writing it. So that, you know, if they end up grubbing a property and aren't able to construct it because weather or some other unforeseen circumstance, then they just need to hydro seat it so that it's stabilized. That's what I was kind of picturing it as and, you know, I'll throw that back out to the board.
Yes, I just kind of goes back, let me just kind of take it back to, are they submitting the construction plan as you talked about, John?
So I don't think it's that big of a deal to submit a phasing plan prior to site clearing. I don't think it's going to hold them up and it's not necessarily an engineered plan. It's really just taking their existing plan and drawing some overlays on it. So I don't think it's too onerous to do that, but if the applicant thinks it's too onerous, then I'm sure they can state their case and the board can decide.
Okay. So I, I do like the idea of a, of a, of a phased plan. But that's just my, my single opinion. I'll throw it out to my fellow board members. If they would like, yeah, if they feel differently and then I'll ask, I see Chris already has raised his hand, but I'll ask the applicant what, how they feel about it. Fellow board members, any issues with potentially having a phased plan submitted by the applicant?
I'm a little confused because I thought that during the last meeting, they had said that they had planned to submit the phase plans as requested. But maybe that's just my memory not being correct.
Let me ask, Chris has his hand up. I don't know if Chris can address that particular comment or question from Jane. But Chris, the floor is yours.
Hello. I, I didn't have an answer for Jane's question that just came up. My only thought was that on our pre-construction meeting, so to speak, you know, our, our notice of start work once, assuming it's approved, that, that, that's when that phasing explanation would, would sort of, you know, that document would come into play at that time. That's all. Verse, verse, you know, now, having the document now would, would, that would be something, you know, right when you know we're starting work, okay, here, here's our start work package. So that, you know, we don't know what month that is. It's hard to say what someone's schedule is when you don't know what month you're starting.
Sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say that I'm in support of adding the phasing plan to the, you know, as an addendum, but I don't think we have to define a calendar, right?
I don't see that in scope.
So through the chair, the condition as it's written is that they have to submit the phasing plan prior to site clearing. So it could be during the pre-construction meeting or prior to that or tomorrow or whenever. Just prior to actually clearing the site, they would need to submit something and have it approved by the planning board.
Yeah, I, I personally like the condition as written. And I would, unless somebody feels strongly otherwise, I would add that and that to me would. Yes, no, all right.
Could you please read it as written? Cause we had some addendums, right?
Go ahead, John, please reread it.
So I did not change Dave's last addition and I didn't add anything about the stabilization of the site after 30 days, because I would have to come up with something to that extent. But as it was written, as it is currently written and how I read it before is, "Grubbing on the building lots shall only consist of the number of lots estimated to be constructed during that construction season. The applicant shall submit a phasing plan to the planning board prior to site clearing for review and approval."
Sounds fair.
I'm good. All right. If there's no other questions or issues from the planning board, I'm going to close out SW 27. Knowing that that condition will be added. SW 30, including signature line for all, Phil, I'm going to refer to you on this one. Beta recommends a condition that a signed copy of the O and M plan be submitted.
Yeah, it's, it's a standard condition. It's just got to be signed and make sure it's complete. There's been many changes, so. And the same, same for 32.
So John, for 30 and let's just address 30 before we go into 32. Can we literally take the, the copy and paste the language there that requests a signed copy of the O and M plan?
So we actually always put this in because Beta always recommends it. So it's just one of our standard conditions. Same thing as 32.
The 31 and 32, or sorry, 30 and 32 are complete.
Through the chair, just one more thing as we were going through, there were some that, some comments that still needed to be addressed. And I think the applicant would probably be happy to hear this, but I drafted another condition that just says, "The applicant shall submit a final revised set of plans addressing the comments in Beta's letter." And I'll put the date and all the specifics, specifically G1, C1 and SW3. So that will take it out from not having to get reviewed by the board again. They'll just submit a plan addressing those prior to, or as a condition. So we can change, saying prior to, prior to additions of a building permit or prior to site clearing or however we want to time it.
That's acceptable to me.
Reasonable.
So the only one that I have left open, if that covers that one, I think is SW 10. And that's the homeowners association question. And Mr. Nation, now that you're on, we had deferred that one to you. This one specifically speaks to, you know, consider, consider using country drainage sheets flow off the road to vegetation swells or possible to reduce the need for drainage infrastructure in a larger basin. And Beta, Beta's comment is, "Differed to the applicant in town recommend requiring a homeowners association be created to maintain stormwater management and trail systems." And recall from the last meeting of the 12th of July, some discussion on a potential HOA. And I don't know if you had any thoughts or comments on that topic or any other thoughts on SW 10?
Well, the HOA has been, I sent it to Joe Markwannat this, this morning. And it's the same HOA, well, I, I, I'm 99% sure it's the same HOA as Hunter's Ridge. So that calls for homeowner maintenance of the drainage structures and the detention basins anyways. And so I'm not sure, you know, what, what you, what you're looking for beyond that.
I, I think, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's the detention basin, the stormwater manager. And maybe that's kind of a catch all phrase.
Yeah.
Pardon the pun. And then the trail systems as well.
I think that.
Well, I, I think the trail system will be maintained by, by the town.
By the town.
Yeah. I mean, unless there's trails in, in addition to, you know, to the trail that we're talking about, that runs through the property.
That could be true. We could be talking about two different types of trails.
Right.
One, I think the Upper Charles Trail is, should be managed by the town. And any other individual spur trails could be maintained by others. The danger you run into that, just for the planning board, so you know, if the homeowners association has a hold of that, they can limit access so that the public doesn't have access to that. So that's just something to think about. That's why we would want to maintain the Upper Charles Trail because we don't want them, you know, blocking it.
Yes, I think that's an important consideration. Thank you, Jane.
And through the chair, if I may ask a clarifying, Jane, is there any precedence of this type of situation? That, yeah.
Well.
An expert determines.
Sure. In other, in other, the five towns or the other multiple towns throughout the state, where the state has funded these trail systems, they insist that they not be, that they are maintained by the, the towns. They have to have maintained ownership in order for the, for us to qualify for funding.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Through the chair.
John?
Condition, proposed condition two, I think addresses this issue. I'll read that so everyone has, has it in their mind. Maintenance of any and all stormwater management infrastructure outside the road rights of way shown on the subdivision plan shall be the responsibility of a homeowners association and not the town of Hopkinton. The maintenance agreement shall include a provision which allows for the town of Hopkinton to perform emergency work and for reimbursement therefore. Homeowners association documents shall be submitted to planning board for review and approval prior to the commencement of construction.
So that speaks to stormwater and drainage only. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So would not pertain to the trail.
Thank you.
And I think if that is acceptable to the planning board, ideally the applicant as well, that then covers off on SW 10. All right. Any other, I think that, unless I'm missing something, Phil, I think that covers off on the outstanding questions from Beta, the issues from Beta. And I think all, other than, and John, you say G1 is resolved and be captured?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we can work that out tomorrow. Yeah.
G1, G1, C1 and SW3 would be captured on a final revised set of plans prior to site clearing.
All right. I think we've covered off, Phil, or missed anything? That cover off on everything that you, you have any other comments or questions or issues? All right. He's good. Any other questions from the planning board members on Beta related issues? Hearing none. I'm also going to see if there's any other comments within it to the public on some of the outstanding issues or any other questions that the general public may have that I may not have gotten to yet. All right. So John, I think we're at a place where we can continue to move forward and look at 2.7 or should I first kind of go and look at the, the waivers? There are particular, certain process I should follow on this, John?
So there is, I guess, two ways you could go about this. So the next step would probably be looking at the outline. The next step would be to discuss the waivers and the board can either vote or in the, the final vote to approve could say that all, if, if they choose that the waivers should all be granted or, you know, whatever, list it there. Or you can just go through and vote the waivers individually now as you discuss them.
Yeah. I, I think I would prefer to just discuss them and vote on them individually as we watch.
Through the chair.
Ms. Marlowe?
Yes.
You can remember the public?
I am actually speaking as a planning board member here. I just wanted to say you should wrap up this agenda item by 8:45.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mary.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with your thought there and I think that's what we've done in the past is discuss them and vote on them individually.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. The first waiver looks to be 4.1, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry to interrupt, but may I say a general comment before we start discussing the waivers?
You may, Mr. Paul.
So there, there is, it's, it's not unanimous by the planning board, but there has been some discussion about the least amount of waivers approved, if any, would look best on the board and as far as following the rules and regulations of the town. And we, just to, just to add on a little bit further, I think there's some, some waiver requests, three of them, the fact that we could remove completely that are unnecessary, but we can discuss them as we go.
I think I might know where you're going on that, but that's fair. I think, you know, some of those may be removed. Agreed.
Thanks, Dave.
So the first one, 4.1, right, I'm looking at 5.4.1.10, cross section of each street, of each street at 50 foot intervals. John, can you provide a little bit of clarity on that?
The subdivision regs require cross sections for streets at 50 foot intervals.
There are none.
There are none. Board, and I guess they're saying that this is a short enough street where they don't intend on doing 50 foot intervals for cross sections.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. If I, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask, why did people make a comment that there are none?
May, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Markwannat, please.
I think this is an archaic part of the regulations used to develop cuts and fill quantities and ability to, at some section, say, we've got, I'll pick numbers out of the air, we've got a three foot cut for 50 feet. We can generate some idea of, of what we need for material to purchase. There are an awful lot of software programs that can do that now. This may just be a holdover from another time that is not as particularly effective as some other methods. So we feel it's simply not necessary.
Understood. John, do you want to weigh or Phil weigh in on that? Mr. Markwannat's point seems pretty.
Yes. So this is a standard practice to develop roads. You know, most roadway systems require cross sections. It helps you to identify issues. However, this, this project, the grading is done on a site plan. So there's two different ways to do it and they provided the grades, adequate grading on the grading and drainage plans. So it's not completely necessary with this, this smaller site and, and this smaller road. So I have no issue with the waiver request.
Thank you, Phil. Planning board members, any comments or questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would vote in favor, not in favor, I would, I would, my personal opinion is I will deny this waiver until the Zach updates the verbiage to be consistent with what the developer and their professional help are saying.
Say that again, Dave?
My plan, I intend to deny this because of the fact that it is an existing waiver. And if it's not accurate, then we should get it updated through the Zach. My plan, I intend to deny this because of the fact that it is an existing waiver, and if it's not accurate, then we should get it updated through the ZAC.
Through the chair.
Okay, yes, John.
A, a point of, uh, process on that one. Zach doesn't generally review the subdivision regs, um, so that would probably be me, honestly, to review it and update it, and I can, I can certainly undertake that, moving forward.
Good job.
Thank you, John.
So thank you for the comments. Are we ready to vote on this particular waiver? All right, John, do I need to do a formal vote here, or is it a kind of a straw vote on this? I think we have to do a formal vote.
Though a formal vote on the waivers needs to take place, you could do a straw vote on all of the waivers and then a formal vote to do that slate if you want, or you can do individual formal votes for each waiver.
I will do an individual formal vote for each waiver. So, uh, if my process is correct, I will entertain a motion to, uh, waive the cross section of each street at fifty-foot intervals.
Still moved.
Seconded. Who seconded that?
Sundar. Uh, Sundar, Sundar.
Sundar, okay, Sundar. Uh, any discussion? All right, all right, so, um, board members, how do you vote? Mr. Paul?
Dave Paul, no.
Jane Moran?
Jane Moran, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Shadul?
Edurmanan, yes.
Rob Benson?
Rob Benson, yes.
And Fran DeYoung is also a yes.
You missed me.
Oh, Deb, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, sorry, my bad, my cursor didn't go.
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
All right, thank you, Deb.
Through the chair, point of order, Shadul cannot vote on this. He was not on the board when the hearing was opened.
I take my votes.
Strike it from the record. All right, so that has passed with a, um, four to one, I believe. The second waiver, five dot four dot one dot Y, street lights, none are proposed here. I'll ask Mr. Mark Woodout maybe to weigh in, I have an idea, but we'll let the applicant weigh in and then I'll have, uh, comments from Phil.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, I think I might be able to save some discussion. Um, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, this is only to show proposed streetlights on the plan, and there are no proposed streetlights, so this should be removed.
Correct, yeah, we've had discussions about this in the past. Uh, it's kind of unclear, but the, the, um, requirement is that if lights are proposed, they need to be shown on the plan. Um, applicants have submitted a waiver. If they don't propose lights, asking for, you know, just to cover their bases, but generally we've interpreted this as if no lights are proposed, they don't need a waiver.
Uh, and this also probably Dave relates to four dot five. Inflation of streetlights.
Is that the fifth one? Sorry, John. Yes. I would.
It's gonna be waiver from section eight point seven point two.
Correct.
Correct.
So we do, we can remove that waiver request as well, correct?
Correct, yeah, so we are removing four dot two and four dot five as waiver requests. Right, we've already voted on four dot one, four dot three, uh, and this might also fall under that one too, of the, uh, depot and percolation test locations results in digital house lots, non-performed, proposed connection to municipal sewer.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, if I could save you some conversation. I did read this and that the, the last line of the, um, provision says that if you are applying, if you are using town sewer, you just have to get approval, that, that, that's just, um, wa, waiver is not needed and that you need to get approval from the sewage department.
So, John, should this, should four, uh, four dot three also be removed as a waiver request?
I think at this point, it would be prudent for the applicant to request to withdraw this waiver. So it's on the record.
All right, uh, Mr. Nation. Uh, if you've been following along here, we're at four dot three, would you like to remove that waiver request?
Um, I must, I'm, I must be looking at a different paper, is that W, uh, W three?
Uh, no, it looks like it's under section.
So, yeah, so I think the confusion is Fran, I think you're referencing the, um, outline number.
Outline, correct.
And it's actually a waiver from section five point four point one point BB of the subdivision regs.
Just to be clear, through, Mr. Chair, John, can you bring it up and show the description of that? Regulation? Please.
The actual subdivision reg or the, um?
I, I think the subdivision reg, to show that, you know, just so that I'm not making stuff up, I want to just explain the last line, please.
Do you see any re, uh, uh, Ron Nation through, through the chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nation.
Um, uh, I guess it would be good to hear from Joe Markanat on that one. I'm, I'm not sure, well. To get rid of it, we want to, we want to eliminate it.
Yes, because what John is showing, this information should not be required where permits for municipal sewer, sewage of, for the subdivision have been approved by the sewer department.
Team to go.
All right, so just to kind of reiterate, um, Mr. Nation, do you want to withdraw that waiver request for the depot and percolation test location result at the individual house lot?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what it, what the, what the implication is.
Well, I think the implication is, it's not requested or required because you're going to request a proposed connection to municipal sewer.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, as long as Joe's fine with it.
All right, so withdrawn. And we have one waiver request left, four dot four, granite curbs along pavement edge with radius less than a hundred feet, modified Cape Cod proposed. Right, so I know there was discussion at the last meeting about that. Um, so I think the applicant is looking to put in the Cape Cod type of curving as opposed to the granite. Requesting a waiver on the granite, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, the Cape Cod, uh, berm provides the function of controlling the stormwater. Much easier to repair should there be damage to it. Um, homeowners association, much, much cheaper, resetting the gr, the, uh, granite, vertical granite. Um, more construction, more time, more money, more energy, seem like, uh, for the ability to control stormwater, there's no difference.
All right, so planning board members, um, I will entertain a motion, and if there's discussion, we can add that in there, but I'll entertain a motion to, uh, waive the uh, granite and instead put the, um, Cape Cod.
Rob Benson's so moved.
Deborah Feinberg, second.
All right, Mr. Benson. In the motion, Mr. Miss Feinberg seconded, uh, discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Paul.
Hello, I don't want to seem like I'm hogging all the waivers, does anybody else have any discussion that would like to speak first?
Well, go for it, I'll always talk back to you.
Thank you, Jane, thank you, Jane, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, once again, um, I just want to comment that I think John, if he's the appropriate person, should put this on his list that we shouldn't have to make this kind of judgmental decision every time, if it's truly not required, then we should remove it from the regs. Um, I, I, I feel strongly that whenever possible, we should not approve any waivers for a development, um, but obviously we've already, uh, approved number one, so. I've said my piece, thank you.
Good job.
Any other comments from the planning board members?
Mr. Chair, just a procedural question, I assume I will refrain from voting on any um, issues, uh, in this matter now and in future, is that right?
Uh, at least for, for, for this particular proposal, yes, I believe, right, John, because he's not, he's not.
So, so, Shadul, you're not eligible to vote on this, uh, application, but the next one that's on the agenda, the, um, Turkey Ridge, you are eligible, because the first hearing is tonight.
Okay, thank you for the clear.
I think we're ready for a vote. Uh, Deb Feinberg.
Yes.
All right. Very good, Rob Benson.
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane Moran?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave Paul?
Dave Paul, no.
All right, uh, Sundar.
Sundar Subraman, yes.
And Fran DeYoung is a yes as well. All right, um, uh, Mary, if you're on, um, I know I'm pretty much up against time here.
Yes.
So I think for, uh, the purposes of where we're at, we completed the waiver requests, and then I think at the next meeting for, and I don't know, John, what date we have available, but, um, I would like to get it wrapped up.
So through the chair, just to go over what is left to do.
Yep.
It is making the findings and voting to approve.
Correct.
So it may be worth taking time now to read through the conditions and, and get that wrapped up versus continuing it?
Uh, I will refer to the chairwoman, uh, as she manages the master slate.
Okay, we have, we have approximately another hour of agenda items after this is completed, so that would mean, if, if you can finish this by nine PM, and that would mean our meeting will go till ten PM, approximately, okay?
Got it.
Okay. Then please.
All right.
No pressure, Fan.
Yeah, I got it. So, we are now on two dot seven, uh, and then going into two dot eight, so the board actions here. Look to, um, me five folks, um, to approve definitive subdivision plan, the findings, and I will review the findings, um, as listed. And then the board will then vote, so John, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'll read out the findings and then the board can then look to approve or deny, uh, with conditions, correct?
Uh, so that, yes, you could read out the findings and somebody could vote to do that, or, um, somebody could just make the findings, you can vote on them now, and then you can read out the conditions and then make a, a motion on whether or not to approve with those conditions, so it could be two votes.
Okay.
Or it could be one vote, and you just tie it all together, usually it's cleaner with two.
So the first one is just to, to make, to vote on the finding, correct?
Correct, and they're written in two point eight point one of the memo, if you would like a cheat sheet.
Uh, I'm looking right at it. All right, so, um, I'll entertain a motion, um, or if somebody wants to make the motion that they move that the board finds that the proposed definitive subdivision plan conforms to the subdivision regulations with exception of the following waivers, uh, which are hereby granted and have been voted on that the granting of these waivers is in the, is in the public interest and will not be inconsistent with intent of the subdivision control law.
I'm moved.
So moved by Deb.
Through the chair, you also would need to mention the two waivers.
The two waivers listed, so the two waivers waiver listed.
If you'd like, I could read them to you.
Read them for me, because I'm pulling out the paper.
From section, section five point four point one point N and eight point two point two point A of the subdivision regulations.
We have a, uh, somebody, Deb made the motion, and it was seconded, I believe, by, by Rob. Is that right? Um, let's do the roll call vote. Uh, Sundar.
Sundar Subraman, yes.
All right, uh, Deb Feinberg.
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Dave Paul?
Dave Paul, yes.
Jane Moran?
Jane Moran, yes.
Rob Benson? Rob?
Rob Benson, yes. Point, point of order, did, did, did we, I don't know that we moved this motion to approve, uh, unless I'm mis, misremembering the past five minutes.
Didn't I read out the findings and then Deb made the motion to approve it and it was seconded?
Who was it seconded by? Maybe it wasn't Rob?
Maybe it wasn't Rob.
Yeah, we, we may have not have gotten a second, right, so I, I can.
I, I apologize, I thought Rob had seconded it.
I, I, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. So Deb Feinberg made the motion, Dave Paul seconded it.
But Rob Benson is yes.
Right, and Fran DeYoung is a yes. So I think I've caught everybody. It's unanimous. All right, moving on to the, um, uh, approval with, uh, approval denial, so we can do the approval with conditions or deny it, uh, approval with conditions, uh, and I'll read it out here. I moved that the board approved the definitive subdivision plan with the following conditions and with the conditions as, um, are listed and read aloud by the chair. So, John, you want me to read the, uh, the conditions at this point?
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna read, uh, eighteen conditions, everybody.
Mr. Chair, if you want, I've got three additional conditions, so if you'd like, I could read them on your behalf.
I would love you, I'd love you to read the conditions on my behalf.
So I'll start, so condition one, after finding that it was in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law, the planning board waived strict compliance with the following provisions of the rules and regulations relating to the subdivision of land or the subdivision regulations. The waivers of the provisions allow the construction of the subdivision as shown on the approved subdivision plan. These waivers are from section five point four point one point N and eight point two point two point A. Condition two, maintenance of any and all stormwater management infrastructure outside the road rights of way shown on the subdivision plan shall be the responsibility of a homeowners association and not to the town of Hopkinton. The maintenance agreement shall include a provision which allows the town of Hopkinton to perform emergency work and for reimbursement therefore. Homeowners association documents shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval prior to the commencement of construction. Condition three, a town clerk certified version of this decision shall be recorded at the Middlesex County Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit for the work that is subject to this decision. Condition four, the director of municipal inspections inspects projects under construction for compliance with the approved decision. This includes your right driveway, roadway, and infrastructure construction shown on the plan. If the director of municipal inspections determines at any time before, after, before, during construction that a registered professional engineer or other such outside professionals required to assist with the inspections of the stormwater management system or any other component of the approval, the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of these inspections. All, condition five, all construction activities shall adhere to applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations regarding noise, vibration, dust, sedimentation, and the use of interference with or blocking of town roads. Condition six, the applicant shall be responsible for mitigating all construction-related impacts including erosion, siltation, and dust control. The applicant shall maintain all portions of any public way used for construction access free of soil, mud, or debris deposited due to the use by construction vehicles associated with the project and shall regularly sweep such areas as directed by the director of municipal inspections in consultation with the DPW director. Condition seven, the applicant shall regularly remove construction trash and debris from the site in accordance with good construction practice in the construction management plan. No tree stumps, demolition material, trash, or debris shall be burned or buried on the site. Condition eight, a completed signed construction management plan shall be submitted to the planning board prior to the commencement of any site work. The applicant shall also submit a revised full plan set which incorporates all the modifications made during the public hearing process and any required in this decision. Condition nine, the completed and signed stormwater management, stormwater pollution prevention plan and copy of notice of intent from the EPA shall be provided to the planning board prior to the commencement of construction. Condition ten, a signed illicit discharge statement shall be provided to the planning board prior to construction. Condition eleven, erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be implemented during the construction period in accordance with the approved plan and the construction management plan. If they are found to be inadequate, the applicant shall immediately correct any deficiencies. Condition twelve, the planning board shall receive a sign-off confirming that the site contractor and any major subkind, many, major subcontractors. Condition twelve, the planning board shall receive a sign off confirming that the site contractor and any major subkind, many major subcontractors have received the construction management plan prior to the commencement of any site work. Condition thirteen, construction may occur only between the hours of seven A M and seven P M, Monday through Friday and Saturdays between eight A M and four P M pursuant to chapter one forty one, article one of the Town of Hopkinton general bylaws. Condition fourteen, no building permits may be issued on the nine building lots to be served by the road shown on the plan until construction of ways and the installation of municipal services is secured by a performance guarantee. In order to establish the amount of the performance guarantee, the applicant shall submit to the board a professional estimate of the cost to the town to complete all work approved by the plan and remaining at the time of the cost estimate is submitted. Instructions as to the preparation of the estimate and its content are contained in section seven point six of the subdivision regulations. The amount of the performance guarantee shall be approved by the board and the guarantee shall be provided to the town prior to the issuance of building permits. Condition fifteen, any street name shall be approved by the Board of Selectment prior to the, uh, endorse, I should say, select board prior to the endorsement and recording of the subdivision plan. The street sign shall be erected by the applicant prior to the issuance of building permits. Condition sixteen, a street acceptance plan which conforms to the requirements in section eleven of the subdivision regulation shall be submitted to the planning board upon completion of construction. Condition seventeen, each lot shall be assigned a street number by the director of municipal inspections and such number shall be noted on the plan prior to endorsement, endorsement. Condition eighteen, the applicant slash developer shall provide the principal planner with a point, project point of contact and a contact information prior to the issuance of a building permit. This point of contact information shall be kept current through the correspondence to the pr- principal planner until the final certificate of occupancy is issued or construction is otherwise considered complete. Condition nineteen, a limit of work is to be flat prior to the site clearing to show the boundaries at the, on the ground. Trees and vegetation within these areas is to remain in its natural state throughout construction. Condition twenty, the applicant shall submit a final revised set of plans addressing the comments in Beta's letter dated whatever the date was, I forget at this moment.
July thirty.
July thirtieth, twenty twenty one, specifically comments G one, C one and S W three prior to site clearing. Condition twenty one, grubbing on the building lots shall only consist of the number of lots estimated to be constructed during that construction season. The applicant shall submit a phasing plan to the planning board prior to site clear, review and approval.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh, any discussion by board members?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I know we only have six, I know we only have six minutes, but through you, I just wanted to ask if Jane was okay with not having a trail condition. Um, and I, I think it would be a good idea if we did. My only concern is that we don't have it showing on the plan.
So what is the note?
What do you mean?
So through you, Ms. Chair, I just wanted to, um, Jane, we talked about the town being able to maintain the trail. And I don't think that's really called out anywhere.
Is it typically called out in those type of situations?
Well, we don't really don't have the upper Charles Trail going to a development.
Through the chair.
John.
I think we wouldn't necessarily want to have a, uh, condition on including a trail on the plans because then that forces the developer to include a trail even if the plans change for the trail. Um, and then any agreements between the landowner and the town when constructing the trail will have language about maintenance in it. So I don't necessarily think it needs to be in this decision, it'll probably be captured elsewhere.
I'm okay, thanks.
You good, Dave?
Yeah, I'm good. I want to throw it out there, discuss it. We had a few minutes. Thanks.
That's fair. Any other discussion points before we vote?
Through the chair, was there a motion in a second?
Can we just talk?
No, you can question first, Fran.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion then to prove the, um, with conditions.
I think it's, it's listed under two point.
Two point eight dot two dot one, cruel with conditions.
I got it.
Board approved the definitive subdivision plan with the following conditions as they were previously read aloud by the chair.
So moved, Dave Paul.
Deborah Feinberg.
Very good. Any other conversations or discussion? All right, peer none. How do you vote, uh, Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave Paul?
Dave Paul, yes.
Rob Benson?
Rob Benson, yes.
Fran Dion is a yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the applicant. Uh, and thank you to Phil and John for all your hard work and effort. Good luck to the applicant and the development.
Thank you.
And, uh, John, do we need to close the, uh, public hearing?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran.
All good, Deb.
Good job.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
They're moved. Dave Paul.
Mr. Paul?
Deborah Feinberg, second.
First in second, any discussion? All right, uh, Rob Benson, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Dave Paul, how do you vote?
Do we still have like three minutes left? No, well, I vote yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Deb Feinberg?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Sundar Subraman?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
And Fran Dion is a yes. I now turn the, uh, chair back over to Madam Chairperson, Mary Larson Marlowe, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's proceed to our next agenda item. We need to open a new public hearing for the definitive O S L P D subdivision, Turkey Ridge Estates, that then that is the one. I don't have the address.
Lincoln Street.
Lincoln Street and, um, and.
Lincoln and Cedar.
Cedar Street, thank you, Cedar Street. Um, so, um, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing, please.
Still moved.
Thank you, Jane. Want someone a second?
Fran.
Deborah Feinberg, second.
Thank you. Okay, and voting on that, Fran?
Fran Dion, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Shadul?
Shadul Manan, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Did I get everybody? I'm looking through the list. Yeah, I think I've got everybody. And Mary Larson Marlowe is yes. Oh, there you are, Sundar. Oh, you went to a phone, that's why. Oh. Thank you. Okay, so we are opening the public hearing. Now, this is the first hearing, but we have, many of us are familiar with this from the O S L P D special permit hearing, um, when we're looking at a, um, pre-final plan. Um, so I want to give the opportunity to the applicant to speak to the plan and, uh, give a brief introduction. And John, if you can pull up a plan on the screen as well. I don't know if the color one overlay that they provided is the best option or um, I always liked color ones, but I think, uh.
Start with that one, John.
So Shane, did you want to bring up your screen so you can point, or I'm happy to bring it up on my screen?
Sure, I can, I can share quick. You guys see that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Shane Peral and, uh, I'm a co-owner of the Turkey Ridge Estates Project and also in the Zoom is Kyle Luccher and Courtney DeDarian. And, um, first of all, we wanted to thank the, the planning board for having us back. We are very excited to be back. And I also just wanted to, uh, clear up any confusion regarding the name of our project. I know when we were having, um, the concept phase, it was Deer Ridge Estates. And, uh, after some, you know, talks with the police and fire chief regarding some concerns and similar named streets in Hopkinton, we were more than willing to change it. So that's now why you see Turkey Ridge, uh, Estates. So it's been a little while since we've been on the planning board, so just kind of wanted to give a quick overview of our project. Uh, we have a twenty acre parcel that is nestled, uh, at the end of Lincoln Street and off Cedar Street Extension right along the Sudbury River. Our proposal is a four lot subdivision off of the end of Lincoln Street and then a new four lot subdivision off of, of Cedar Street Extension. Some of the changes that were made from our concept plan to this definitive, definitive plan before you was, uh, blocks one and two that were located here, we shifted plan south to, uh, get off of the Pappas property and, um, basically create an even buffer between, um, on both sides of the street between the Pappas property and the, the Franz property. One of the other changes or conditions was to keep the access road, as you see between the two cul-de-sacs uh, located here. And, um, really lastly was the recommendation of the planning board was just to stay in, you know, constant contact with the butters and the neighbors. And as you know, Courtney and Kyle live, uh, thirty one Lincoln and they've done a great job um, staying in constant contact with the butters and neighbors to make sure that everybody's happy um, on board with the project and, you know, in full support of the project. Um, so, um, again, I wanted just to thank the planning board for, you know, having us on. And as you know, Joe Markadon's our engineer and I figured I'll turn it over to him quick to see if Joe has any opening statements.
Evening, folks. Uh, as Shane mentioned a moment ago, um, we were, perhaps Mary, we were back, uh, before the group, um, uh, and wrapped up in, uh, February of, uh, twenty one, the plan closely resembles uh, the concept plan. You maintain the buffers, uh, around the perimeter uh, as the board requested, balanced, uh, the two distances. We were ten foot against the Pappas property on the northwest and a little bit more to DeFranza. We've kind of balanced that, um, so that, um, it didn't put, uh, especially on its burden on, on either one. Our roadway, our extension off Lincoln Street is four hundred and twenty seven feet, so, uh, in line with that plan, well under the thousand foot maximum. Uh, what we're calling Road A, we have not petitioned the, the select ward for a name, but the road off of Cedar Street Extension is six hundred and eighty one feet in length, again, um, under that maximum. We're at, uh, half the site, fifty five percent of the site is open, so we're in line with, uh, the regulations, um, in the, in the bylaw. As a practical matter, um, we are, we have some historic uh, soil testing information that the, um, Board of Health is willing to recognize. We are, have been asked to augment that information with current testing. We are waiting for, uh, the weather to ease up a little bit. That was a wet July that we all lived through. But we are back out there quite frankly tomorrow through Thursday to wrap our soil testing, so we'll be able to answer some questions at the, um, at the Board of Health. From a stormwater standpoint, we collect our stormwater uh, overland and then close drainage systems within both roadways. And we're taking it with the grade northerly down towards Cedar Street Extension. Um, the top of the plan that, uh, Shane is sharing with us. So the basins are along uh, that northerly side below the homes so that we can more effectively, uh, catch all of, of that work. Um, some of that work is in the buffer zone to wetlands resource areas. Uh, we are, uh, filing the necessary um, notice of intent documents with that group and hope to be with them shortly. And, um, I think the only other issue is, um, just to, I guess, remind or refresh the, the board's memory. Uh, Shane is proposing fire suppression in each of the homes and we are currently, uh, working with the chief to establish, uh, a location for a, uh, for a cistern so that, uh, there'll be a, a water supply in the event of a fire or an emergency. Generally, those are some of the high points in some of the issues we, we normally touch on. If there's something particular like to, uh, review, then I'd be happy to, to take it up.
Thank you. So, so Joe, you scheduled it well with a lot of hearings that you were involved in all on one meeting.
It was a night, yeah.
Um, John, uh, would you like to just give an overview of, of, uh, staff, you know, your review, your report on this?
Sure. So, um, kind of like the Conley Farm one, this is a definitive plan submission for the O S L P D. Uh, so they've already obviously been granted a special permit and now they're going for the definitive, so we have to review it based on the subdivision regulations. You can see some comments that have already been submitted from Board of Health, myself, and I'll read those shortly. Uh, we have not gotten comments from Beta. The timing of getting the, uh, review fee and their review did not work out. They would be able to get it in time for tonight, so we'll get it for the next meeting. And yeah, I think it's going to be the same process as the last hearing, except all board members are now eligible. Once Gary watches the, the video, he will also be eligible. Uh, so just going over my comments, um, I had three of them. I'm looking for the applicant to confirm whether or not Lot Me, Lot Eight meets the minimum frontage depth. On the plan, it showed the box on all the lots except for that one, so I just want them to confirm that it meets that zoning requirement. Also wanted to see where the agreement reached with the neighbor, uh, to the uh, what is that, northeast, um, the Pappas uh, neighbor, where that currently stands and how it was incorporated in design. And there is an email in the shared folder from uh, Ms. Pappas about their agreement. I want to say it's from January from, to refresh the board's memory. Um, and also it appears the emergency road is going to be accessed via the driveway on Lot Four, and I'm just looking to see what the applicant is proposing to do to make sure that that is always going to be accessible. Uh, if there's going to be any kind of agreement with snow plowing, um, any parking to, to be prevented at that part of the driveway so they won't block any emergency vehicles and other, other issues that might result from having that be accessed through a driveway.
That was, that was actually one of my questions too. Um, should, should I have, um, them address those, uh, questions right now? John, do you think, uh, we can just go ahead and?
I think if they are willing to, they can do that. I also, uh, would imagine we'd want to get some more clarification. Um, I mean, Beta may bring this stuff up in their review and it might get addressed through that point.
That's true.
You know, I think this review is today is going to prob- probably be pretty short seeing as how we don't have any beta issues to discuss, so, um, I, 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 that's a long way of saying it's up to the board and it's up to the applicant if they want to discuss that right now.
Fair enough. Okay. So I, um, I had just, uh, a few comments and questions and, um, that had to do more with, you know, the, the location of the basins. In general, um, is it, is it part of our subdivision regs that the basins have to be with, on lots or they can't be in the common area because it's, it seems it would be more natural to have some of those lots. Let's see, I can't tell the numbers. It looks like one, two, yeah, two, two and three have these weird dog legs off the back. And it, it seems like that's really only to accommodate the basin. Um, so the, just my question on that, um, to both John and to Joe, you know, does it make more sense to have that in the common area?
So there is a requirement that stormwater facilities, I forget what the actual requirement is, but, um, they cannot be substantially located in the common.
Okay.
They need to be located on lots. I think provision will allow some of it to be located in the open space, but.
Yeah, I believe it's a five percent limit of the parcel size.
I see.
Area.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's part of the O S L P D, uh, requirement, so that's actually in the special permit.
That makes sense. All right. I had a feeling it might be something like that. I just didn't recall. All right. And do, um, any of the other board members have preliminary comments on this? Obviously, we'll get into a lot of detail.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think you wanted to ask about that driveway slash combination. If not, I will.
Well, go ahead, Dave.
So that, that seems kind of funky to me, like you would need some kind of, uh, agreement to be able to use that trail to walk on that person's driveway. And I was just wondering why they wouldn't just have two separate.
With an attempt to, um, reduce the, the tree clearing in that location. Uh, a twelve foot wide driveway, a sixteen foot wide access to satisfy, uh, the chief Put us at a twenty eight foot footprint through there. Just seems like an opportunity to reduce some, some clearing and some site disturbance.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can you just explain the legal allowing of the passing along that driveway or? Is it right of way or?
Is that, is that, that was addressed to, to Mr. Markadon?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I would imagine we have to create an agreement, there had to be an easement over that portion of, of lot four. To allow the access and, and that will have to be kept clear for emergency vehicles.
Great, thank you.
And, and I have a follow up on that, and that is just a question of, is there anything? On the site? In terms of wetlands or something else that prevent the driveway from being a little bit. Closer to the other driveway that's for lot three? That's just, just a question, I don't mean to redesign things for you, but I'm just wondering.
The driveway for lot four, riding access for lot four?
Yeah, I'm saying the driveway for lot four, is there anything preventing moving it up farther, is there anything on the lot?
It was simply that septic system that the cursor is. Proposed septic system was at that location.
Got it.
Sometime of, excuse me, sometime of off. Type of offset, it's difficult to get out tonight.
Alright, that makes sense, thank you. Any other preliminary questions? Just looking through because I don't know if the hand raised feature is working. Okay, no one else, alright, good. So I just want to. To. Let's see here.
To you, Mr. Chair, while, Madam Chair, while you're thinking about that, can I just ask one quick follow up? So the surface on the driveway versus the emergency road, I imagine the driveway would be asphalt. So. Can we ask the applicant, please?
Highway is, is asphalt, the connector road was going to be gravel as proposed on the site, on the concept plan.
Okay.
Did you have any follow up, Dave?
No, no, just trying to envision it because. I guess the cars would not go on the gravel, right, the cars would stay on the driveway and the folks walking along the, the pathway there would just change from gravel to pavement. I, I think I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, well, Dave, we most likely have a, some type of crash gate. Or bollards of some sort, you know, delineating the driveway and the gravel road.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, but that's only for that section there, you'd have to have the open section as well, right?
There would be the section along the driveway and the gravel road. Basically so when cars couldn't drive, you know, under this driveway, then onto the gravel road.
Oh, I see, just for, with a space enough for a person to get through, but not a car.
Yes, exactly, yeah, we talked with the fire chief and police chief about, you know, types of, of crash gates and access for them, there will be. You know, access for them to either crash through or unlock a gate to be able to access, you know, one way or the other.
And there is a sidewalk along the, I'm going to say bottom side. Of the road, right, yeah. But people, if accessing the trails in the open space from here, from. Cedar Street, I should say, and walking up that sidewalk, they would need to go on to someone's driveway. Before reaching the, the. Access road. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes, correct.
So we might want to think about a different solution for that.
Okay.
So.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Time to talk about it.
Yeah, it seems like that if they just continued the sidewalk to the.
That might be a possibility.
Yeah.
Without making, you know, it might not have to be as, as wide.
Correct.
So, yeah, so that, just, just think about potential solution for that. And.
Simple trail.
I'm sorry, say again?
Or even just a simple trail system.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, but making it separate from the driveway.
Oh, so through the chairwoman, access to lot number four, would that be from Cedar Street or Lincoln Street?
Cedar Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and in terms of access to the open area, the common area, open space. From Lincoln Street. So what is your general proposal? For, for access to trails and so on? People would be able to park in the cul-de-sac or along Lincoln Street?
Yeah, I mean, the idea would be to access from Lincoln Street. You know, the north, the planned south side from, from this area and planned north from, from this area. We haven't gotten too deep into the design of, you know, any trail heads or trail openings, but. That would be, the anticipation would be, you know, to access from these two locations and then. Access from Cedar, Cedar Street Extension could come from, you know, the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, through, through this direction or down through Lincoln to, you know, either the north or south side.
And at this point, are you considering the open space being turned over to Halt or to another organization? Or handled through a. Subdivision agreement, I mean, the homeowner's agreement? What is your thinking right now?
Our general thinking was, I believe, Halt, Courtney, I believe you were speaking with.
There were discussions about that previously.
Yes, that's correct, we talked with Maury a little bit, I think Chuck may be on the call this evening, that's what we would like to do with it if possible.
Okay, okay, understood.
Through you, Madam Chair, just to continue the conversation on trails and sidewalks. Through these, for the applicant, is there sidewalks on Lincoln Street section?
No, not currently.
Is a sidewalk proposed, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just show the outline of that, is it on the southern side?
It looks like yes, southern side.
Yeah, it is hard to see on this plan. Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Could have highlighted the gray sidewalk.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Can you edit this?
And then it ends at the end of the open space line, so basically where the color ends, it ends there, yep. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Alright, and so Concom meeting is, is obviously, you know, that, that. That is going to be important for us to hear their comments and, and you negotiate that piece with them. In terms of any incursion into the wetlands buffer zones, so, so you don't have that scheduled yet, is that correct?
Correct, we're about to file.
Okay.
The, the application.
Sounds good, okay. Well, I do note that, and this for the benefit of the. Of the board members, that the two waivers that are being proposed are the two of the waivers that were just being discussed for the last one. So, and I believe the cross sections of each street at fifty foot intervals. Is that we determine that this waiver is not necessary or it is necessary?
It is necessary.
Okay, it is necessary because that is. Okay, got it. Okay, so, so they are both necessary, I know that the granite curve one is necessary, so, but they are not particularly controversial ones. Good. Okay, are there any comments from the public at this stage?
I don't see any hands raised, Madam Chair.
I don't either, okay. And our outline is list, where's our outline listed? Nope, that's not. I don't, I don't see the usual outline for review of. Items.
Section three point two.
Okay, that's, it's a different outline than I, than I thought we usually had, okay, in, in terms of the topics that we usually go through?
Through you, Madam Chair, before we switch to that, could I just, if I may ask the applicant? I, I believe that a lot of these driveways go down, descend. And, and just like maybe if they could just point out if a couple are level or a couple are uphill, just to understand the, the flow of the geography. I don't know if that was clear, that question or not.
Yeah, I don't know, you're probably better at explaining your topography.
Yeah, so if we start at the easterly end, the Lincoln Street end. That where the cursor is, that is climbing the hill.
Oh, it's going uphill.
Couple of grades there going from. Three thirty up to three forty five. Eight behind it, further from Lincoln Street is also uphill. The other two, five and six, the homes will be down below road grade, so two up, two down. We jump over to Cedar Street Extension end. The road A end, the first lot you come to is. Oh, probably a few feet below grade, not dramatic. And then I think the one at the end, four, is about the same elevation as the roadway, so one and four are neutral or slightly up. Where two and three will be down, will be below the road height.
Perfect, thank you.
There was another question that I thought of too. That is on lot eight. I know that there were existing trails. That are on this hill, yes? And obviously, you know, the lot will take up some of the, the space, but is it, is it possible to? At the very end of that lot eight, to make the existing trail not go through the lot, but make that part of the common area? Just so that that trail can be maintained without going on to private property?
Yeah, I don't think it's, would be difficult to push this trail south.
Okay.
Or shoot it around.
Good, something to consider, good, okay. Well, thank you. So, okay, so the next, the next meeting that we have, we will go through the Beta peer review comments and. And in all likelihood, Phil, I, I imagine that you are working on it now, or you and your team are. But. In all likelihood, you, you will, you, the applicant will have a chance to review these comments and possibly even reply to them. Before our next meeting and that, i- if it's possible, timing wise for everyone. That speeds up the process because it means that, you know, you've already had a chance to answer them some things and so you've already had a chance to think on them and consider. The suggestions or, or requirements that, that, that Phil and his team address. So, and, and I said the waivers will, will likely not be controversial, other than that Dave will vote no because of the, you know. Point he made earlier. And, and so at that point, we will just review the design criteria and go through the findings and so on, but. I want to give the planning board members one last chance to point out any. Issues that they see as a possible, you know, sticking point. And any questions they have on this, on this plan and their review. So, so we have given the applicant the opportunity to address those before our next meeting. Anyone?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm the, I'm the quiet, I'm the quiet one.
Quiet one, Jane, I saw your hand first.
Okay, so I know that Halt was mentioned and I know that they had some preliminary. Trails that they had. Envisioned, and I was wondering if you had a chance to talk with them. About that, or if they were going to build the trails, or if they were going to ask you to continue the trails out to the parking area that's going to be proposed or. What that might look like.
We've been in communications with Halt, we haven't really, you know, gotten down to the nitty gritty and design trail heads and trail designs. But we certainly are open to discussions with them and we certainly had a very transparent and open, you know, communication line and I, you know.
I know they're, they're pretty good to work with and I'm sure that they'll be. More than willing to work with you on this plan. So thank you.
And Dave, did you have any comments or questions?
Same subject, yes, please, trails, and back to your point, Mary, I was. The, the trail that you asked, I think it was a trail that you asked to move, are those existing trails, I didn't realize those were trail marks.
Loaded.
These, yeah, those like the ones that have the clouds around them?
Yeah.
Yes, those are existing trails that exist on this, this property or this open, this very open wooded property right now.
It, it sounds like if they haven't spoken with Halt yet, it's probably premature to ask, you know, about that trail going right through the house, right?
Well, yeah, that, that trail is obviously not going to be there anymore.
Okay, just checking, I wasn't sure if there was going to be a pathway through the, the deck out to the front door.
Yeah, to David's point, if Halt isn't willing to take that out, I'm sure the planning board members would ask for contiguous. Contiguous trail from, you know, point A to point B.
And if Halt.
Beginning to end.
Through the chair, once again.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Point that if, if Halt is not willing to take it on, there's always the TCMC Trail Committee.
Yep.
That can work with the developer and the applicant.
Yes. Mr. Doshi? Oh, I'm sorry, could you, could you state your name and address?
Yes, Charles Doshi, twenty five Sanctuary Lane. A, one of the Halt Board of Directors and also on the TCMC. Maury Gasser, the President of Halt has been in communications. Nothing is decided yet in terms of trails, we really haven't looked thoroughly at new trails layouts in that open space. One question Maury had was why on lot seven. I believe the area is fifty thousand square feet. And perhaps. Reduction to forty thousand would leave that. Existing trail in question. In the open space, that's something that might be looked at. But Halt is by no means wedded to the existing trail network, we always take a look at the, the site and see what is going to make the most sense. The also. Halt has a concern which Maury has expressed to the board before about. Then if this property requires a CR, a conservation restriction. That. The official state conservation restriction procedure is rather cumbersome. And that. In some situations, particularly if Halt has ownership of the land. We would like the board to consider interpretation of the zoning. To require, yes, a conservation restriction. But lowercase, not going through the full state procedure. And that if the property is owned by a conservation organization. That in itself would be protection without having independent state sanctioned CR. Those are basically Halt's comments where we stand now, thank you.
Thank you, and I believe we've done that in the past. And I believe we've done that in the past, the conservation restriction, as, as you are discussing that. So, so I think that's important that we, you know, comply with whatever makes it the easiest to administer and makes sense. Jane?
Yeah, the other alternative would just be to hand it over to the town as open space, and then the town would
Right.
Then hand it over to Halt.
Right.
Which might be less cumbersome.
Yeah, and I think that has been done in the past, yeah.
Yes, and that's, that's traditionally the less encumbersome way to do it. Then you don't have to go through the state to do, you know, to maintain it, Maury. I mean Chuck.
Good, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, who, who spoke first?
Go ahead, Rob, I'll wait.
All right, thanks. Is there a particular reason, there, there's between lots and seven, seven and eight, there's this little triangle that's just considered open space. I think we, when I look at plans like this, it'd be nice if every plan was just rectangular lots and so on. But because of our rules, because of the rules and regulations as written, it causes some undesirable lot lines. And I just, I look at it as like sacrifice, like giving that extra little piece to open space when it's not required. It might be a better house lot for that homeowner, and it might not be worth, and like, I, I look at it, and it's not worth sacrificing that little triangle of space to open space when it's not needed to meet the regulations.
I agree.
That's a good idea.
Very good point.
Yeah. In fact, that's something that Halt has been requesting.
Yes.
Not to have the odd shape.
If, if I, if I, I believe that line does run all the way through.
Yeah, I think there was an error in my shading, Joe.
A given.
Traveled over your bold line here, and it, it is a part of Lot 8.
Wrong.
Okay, so it's just, it just seems to, it's just an error right now.
Yeah, I, I tried to just overlay his plan with shaded areas, and I messed up in that corner, I guess.
If, if I, if I may, just one more comment through the chair. It's, it's sometimes a fine balance to create properties that are, Hopkinton, like, everybody on the board lives in Hopkinton, we want our property values to be maintained. Everybody in town wants their property values to be maintained. So just making the best homes and the best lots that can be done in accordance with the rules is, is one of the goals I have for every development. That's all I want to say.
Good. So, along those lines, and I'll, I'll get to you, Shahedul. Along those lines, on the back, back end of Lot 2 and 3 and even 4, if it's possible to straighten some lines, again, it makes the common area easier to facilitate. There's going to be less, and keeping in mind, you know, keeping the, the basins, the retention basins on on the lots rather than co- the common area. But there's still some, some room to play with there in terms of flattening out the backside of the, the development lines and, and making the common area easier to administer, so. Okay, so just, again, point to consider. Shahedul, did you have comments?
I did, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. One is that obviously the trail looks inconsistent and broken and messed up, to be honest. So I don't know what's the exact summary of everyone's discussion on that? And what is our request or plan to kind of make it more consistent and coherent with our overall trail view in this scenario? If I'm missing something, please feel free to explain. So that's one, what, what is the thought that we are all, we all discuss some of it to kind of summarize, so we understand it? And what is the next phase or step to kind of make it more consistent, coherent? And something better understandable and usable for the future? That's one question, and I can wait for the second one, if you want to address that.
Okay, so my understanding is that there are some existing trails on this open space. Because right now, obviously, there's nothing built here at all. And as much as possible, the, the, the applicant has designed certain lots to preserve certain open space, obviously. But it is impossible to preserve all of the open space because they're building on it. However, the trails that are shown here, even though those are the, the existing trails, it does not mean those will be the only trails. Because when this is established and, and turned over to the town as open space, we will be potentially building additional trails on the, the dark green portion of this. So, and those will be accessible to the public through trailheads at both the, you know, both cul-de-sacs will have access to the trailheads. So, and, and I think the only thing we were discussing was, you know, perhaps preserving some of that existing trail at the tail end of Lot 8 by moving the lot line a little bit. And then I know Mr. Douchi was talking about Lot 7 and whether or not there was a possibility of, of preserving that. I don't quite see how Lot 7 can be changed while still retaining the proper.
No, I think you're right, there would have to be a new trail established.
Yeah, I think, I think a new trail would have to be done. Because otherwise, the Lot 7 would not have appropriate frontage.
Right, and that's, that's not a big deal, the grade change is not that big of a deal.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're more than open with working on, you know, bringing in new trails and working with Halt to accommodate some recent trails. The, to answer your question, the means and methods of these trails are beyond me. This is, this wasn't a public trail facility before, this is private property. I don't know how these trails were created, or who did them. This is our, you know, obviously private land. But this, you know, I don't, I don't know what the, you know, kind of direction was it derivative of creating these trails. But we can certainly try to, you know, reuse them and alter them in
Right.
feasible way.
And I actually don't even know the condition of the trails. It's, it could well be just that the neighbors have been walking on them and therefore they became trails.
Some of them are, Mary, are actually old cart trails.
Are they?
Or just overgrown.
Yep. So, yeah, so, so even though, you know, even though I identified that particular piece that, you know, might be able to be saved relatively easily, I have no idea what the condition of that, that piece is that's at the back end of Lot 8. Mr. Douchi, if, go ahead, John.
Only that, no, the condition of those trails is not such that it's critical to preserve those particular alignments.
Okay.
The, the question I had regarding Lot 7 is, since it appears to be larger than the minimum required, if the south end of it or that southern boundary could be moved northerly, that would increase the open space and might also leave that existing rough road available. Not critical, just one of the comments that Maury and I had.
Okay. I'm, I'm having trouble understanding that on Lot 7.
It's Lot 8, I, I talked to Maury about this, I just think there's a little miscommunication, Maury and I were talking stuff.
I apologize, that is Lot 8.
Okay, so that's the one I was talking about as well.
Right.
Okay, that makes more sense, because I just was not picturing it with Lot 7. Thank you. Okay.
Courtney was speaking. I think Courtney had a comment.
Thank you, Courtney, thank you for clarifying that.
Oh, that's, no problem, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, good discussion, and I think that's what I wanted to kind of make a point of, that we need some thoughtful kind of closure of what the future is going to look like. And I think there was good comments on that. And obviously, there would be changes, but we just want to make sure that it is done in a consistent and kind of thoughtful way. So it's usable in a, in a good form.
I think the person, I think the person who created the trails, their initial starts with an E. So it must be Emily, if anybody gets that joke, I don't know. Because of the E-shaped trail that I've never seen before. I've never seen a trail shaped that way in my entire life.
Got it.
Amazing, it was inspiring. Thank you, so just another concluding comment, if I may, is, I, I was looking at this, and this design is much more consumable, at least from a, you know, borderline, the elevation, all those that we had questions about on the previous Connolly Road Plan. So, just a comment that maybe you want to start to standardize some of these best practices.
I'm sorry, particularly what regarding?
Particularly, if you remember, the previous design, we had a discussion, or there was a point made that the elevation was not shown. But this one does.
This one does.
And then another discussion was that the border lines were not very clear. And this one is much clearer. So I was just making a comment that some of these best practices, we could try to adopt more.
Absolutely true, thank you, Shahedul. All right. Then we need to come up with the next meeting time. First of all, I just want to verify either John Gelszich or Phil Paradise what the timing of the review from Beta will be, so that we can do that appropriately. I'll come back to you in a moment, Mr. Douchi.
Thank you.
So we have started the review, and we should have it done this week.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So, John, when is the next potential meeting date for this hearing?
Next planning board meeting is August 23rd, and the meeting after that is September 13th.
What's on the agenda for August 23rd?
52 Wilson Street, Earth Removal and Stormwater Management.
Okay. So, it looks like there's space on the agenda on August 23rd. Is, is that acceptable to the applicant, or would you like to move into September instead?
We'll take August 23rd.
August 23rd. Thank you, and by that time, like I said, you should have the letter from Beta, and hopefully you will have had a chance to even comment back on it at that point.
Thank you.
So, we should be able to get a lot done at that meeting. And it looked like the decision date was already out in October, so we're fine for that, John, is that right? Okay. Just one last comment, Mr. Douchi, you, you had your hand raised when we were talking, yep.
Um, he, uh, yes, he, I am looking at the subdivision plan, the property plan in the package, just as a matter of confusion as to lot numbers. The lot that I was referring to seems to be shown as Lot 7 on the subdivision plan itself. So there may be some slight confusion in the different plan versions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll resolve that by the next meeting as well. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to August 23rd.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, that was Jane and Deb. And roll call vote on that, starting with Dave.
Discussion, I.
Yes, go ahead.
I thought we said that we were going to move things to the 9th or something, so that we didn't have to have the 23rd or something around that. So are we planning on meeting every two weeks, or? I thought there was one option for not having a meeting on one date.
So through the, through the chair, that was discussed originally, today was going to be canceled.
Okay.
We had continued the Connolly Farm to today. So then the 23rd was going to be canceled, but then I believe everyone said, no, we need to continue the 52 Wilson Street to the 23rd.
Okay.
That was abandoned.
Yep, thank you for the explanation, Dave Paul, yes.
Thank you. Jane?
Jane Marin, yes.
Shahedul? Fran?
Fran Dion, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subramaniam, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe, yes. And thank you very much, we will see you on August 23rd.
Thank you guys, appreciate it, good seeing you again.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few administrative items to get through. First, we have the planning board zoning advisory appointments. We have two at-large seats and one planning board representative to appoint. We have two applicants for the two at-large seats. So that makes it easy. And it doesn't look like we've got people here, other than Sundar, to, to answer questions or anything. So, so we should be able to do this relatively quickly. I am the current planning board representative to the zoning advisory committee, and I would be happy to take that on this next year as well.
Thank you.
So if somebody wants to propose that, then we can, we can vote on that.
I propose that, yes.
Through the chair, can we vote them all together, all positions together?
You can vote a slate, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then the two at-large seats would be Sundar and Elise. And Elise has been on the board in previous years. She did not, did not participate this last year on the zoning advisory committee, but she was the previous year. So they're both experienced candidates and will be very good and helpful on this, on the zoning advisory committee. So, okay, so I will entertain a motion to appoint myself, Sundar and Elise to the zoning advisory committee for the coming year.
Still moved, and thank you all for doing that.
I do, seconded, thank you all again.
Quick discussion?
Yes.
How many members of the, Zach, would this be?
So we have, how many voting members on Zach? We have nine, nine voting members on Zach. There's an appointed member from Concom, from Chamber of Commerce, from Planning Board. I'm sorry, NZBA. And then we have, that's four, and then we have five at-large seats. But they go on two-year, two-year cycles, right? So, so three members right now are still on the board from being appointed last year. So Sundar, right now, would be appointed for a two-year stint, and so would Elise, okay?
So just roughly 14?
No, it's nine, nine voting members, and if we appoint any associate members, then that's, you know, that would be, but we don't have any associate members.
Oh, okay, good, so this will be nine members, would these two? Great, thank you.
Yep.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Since this is a discussion on the motion, I think you should specify that the motion is for you to be the planning board rep and Sundar and Elise to be the at-large seats.
Okay, so friendly amendment to the motion is that Mary Larson Marlowe will be the planning board representative, and Sundar and Elise will be the at-large representatives for two years. The planning board rep is only a one-year. Okay?
Still moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, voting? Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Jane?
Jane Marin, yes.
Shahedul?
President Madam, yes.
Fran?
Fran Dion, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subramaniam, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's passed unanimously. And Design Review Board, we have, oop, there we go. For the Design Review Board, we need to have a designee from the planning board. One person qualified by training and experience in fine arts or landscape design. One person doing town in the, in the, doing business in the town or citizen at large. One person qualified by training in the art or design professions. And one per, member of the Historic District Commission, or if. or if barring that, another designee of the Planning Board. We have, so we have five seats and we have five, five applicants. And, and John, I know you, you went through this with me, but basically we do have people who qualify for all of those specific requirements.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone want to ask about the requirements of any of these people? I think Tiana is, is probably the, the only new potential applicant. Is that right? The only new member of the board?
Correct. And I believe it's Tiana and I believe she's on the call right now.
Tiana, hi.
Hello. Anyhow, that's correct. It's Tiana. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Tiana. So since we have you here and all the other applicants are, are continuing members of the Design Review Board, but you might be the, the, the new, the new representative, providing some new blood on the board. Can you give us a little bit, just very, you know, like five-minute background for yourself?
Sure. So I have lived in Hopkinton for about six years now. Previously lived in New Jersey, working in New York. I planned to stay here for a long time. We just had a, a son three years ago and, of course, the school system is one of the reasons we moved here. So we, we hope to stay. My background is in art and design, though I did dabble in architecture a little bit. Wasn't for me. But I have about two decades of design experience. It's predominantly in digital and social design and in marketing. But I have worked across many different fields for a lot of different clients. I originally started in education, working at Arizona State University where I attended design school. And I moved into social media and, and tech experiences after that, websites and applications. I currently work for Bob's Discount Furniture, an East Coast staple, I have learned. Coming from Arizona, I had not heard of it. But I am the Creative Director there for our marketing team. So I run a team of about 30 individuals ranging across production. We do all of our own commercials and design for digital print, out-of-home, social media, email. So I've been doing that for about five years and absolutely love it. It is in Connecticut, so I'm mostly remote, which allows me to have a decently flexible schedule.
Great.
It was less than five minutes. It's my very short life story.
Very nice. Well, welcome to the, the Town of Hopkinton Volunteer Contingent. So that'd be very nice to have you, have you join us and in our efforts. Does anyone have any questions for Tiana?
Pretty impressive resume.
Thank you. I started young, so I'm a young 20-year veteran of design.
It's great.
Thank you for stepping up. Welcome.
Just welcome.
Lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm excited to, to be able to join and I've been attending more of the, the town meetings just to try to get involved. So when I saw this opportunity, it seemed like a great fit.
It's great. I started on the zoning advisory committee before I came into the Planning Board. So, and a Design Review Board, I just don't know anything about design. So I'm glad for people who do.
Tiana, in your experience, you will come across a lot of volunteers that really care about Hopkinton. So it's a good town.
Yes, I haven't lived here that long, but I've definitely come to love it. You know, I, I'm from Arizona and we, we just don't have communities like this out there. It was a really great move and especially from New York.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any discussion about any of the other applicants tonight? Then I would like to entertain a motion to, to approve or to appoint the Design Review Board applicants. Jeanette Thompson, Sue Ellen Stoddard, Ria McNamara, Greg Mays and Tiana Mu for the coming year, calendar year.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
One last thing. It may be beneficial just to, it doesn't have to be in part of the vote, but just to understand who's getting appointed to what seat so that there's less confusion moving forward. So.
Okay. So we'll say.
Swappable, but.
We'll say Tiana is, is art or design professions. And then who, who's the landscape architect? I can't remember.
Sue Ellen.
Sue Ellen is the landscape architect. And then the, the other three are just designees, right? So.
Yeah. I would say Ria could be number three.
Okay.
Doing business. And then Planning Board designee and Planning Board designee would be, and Greg.
Sounds good. Okay. Voting on this, Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Jane?
Jane Marin, yes.
Shahedul?
President, yes.
Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Okay. And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. That passes. And then we just have minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st. They have been edited slightly since the last meeting. We decided not to vote on them at the last meeting. So has everyone had a chance to review the new version? Okay, good. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
No, 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 no. I did, I did send a new version. I'm not sure Stephanie got it.
Not today, Deb. Did you see it?
Yeah, it was, yeah. It was wrong. It didn't include what I had included.
Oh. So, yeah, so I pulled out part of it. I got it after I got home. So I did quick make the recommendations. I can forward it or I can read through it, whichever, if the board.
Probably, yeah, it's probably best to read through it so people know what.
Sure. Just, yep, just the paragraph that's changed or the area that's changed. Sure. So it says Ms. Feinberg updated the board from the Design Review Board. She noted some concerns to bring to the zoning advisory committee, including signs, placement in yards, interior neon signs, consistency in signs, plantings, and when the planning board should be brought in during decisions. Ms. Larson Marlowe noted that the Design Review Board, DRB, is a recommendation and noted that oftentimes the suggestions are brought up from the Design Review Board ideas and conversations that should be discussed by the planning board. She asked for suggestions on how to present more concretely such that the planning board doesn't overlook them. Ms. Feinberg noted it was nice when they are able to review the project prior to the planning board. Sometimes, however, the fuller picture can be missed by skipping the planning board's input, i.e. missing the zoning regulations that were previously voted on at the town meeting by voting on design issues. Ms. Feinberg suggested a roundtable with the planning board so that these kinds of issues can be discussed and the Design Review Board can work better with their guidelines. Okay, thank you.
They were, just to generally overview on that, there were just essentially some commas and lowercase letters and some complete thoughts that needed to be put together.
Yep, it sounds fine to me.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes with these changes that Stephanie just read.
Still moved.
Thank you. Jane? And second?
Deborah Feinberg, second.
Thank you. And voting on these, Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Jane?
Jane Marin, yes.
Shahedul?
I probably should abstain. I wasn't in the meeting.
Fair enough. Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. And so those are approved. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Look at you, 10 o'clock on the dot.
Oh, my God.
No move.
Seconded.
Well done, Mary. Yay.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got a motion from Jane and a second from Sundar. Dave?
I don't know. The last time you chaired, we got out at nine o'clock. Yes, I vote yes.
Jane?
Jane Marin, yes.
Shahedul?
President, yes.
Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Sundar?
Sundar Subraman, yes.
Deb?
Your efficiency rocks. Deborah Feinberg, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mary.
Good job, Mary.
Bye.
Night.